Okay, we'll come to order. That was just a test, I guess. I want to make sure this meeting lasts a long time. We're ready? All right, we're going to come back to order. This is the regular city council meeting, starting at 7:00 on Tuesday, November 22nd. City Clerk, new roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to give us a closed session report? Penny?
Yes, the council agreed to an extension of a previously approved tolling agreement on, sorry, I don't have the matter in front of me, on the matter of Newport Terrace Associations versus the City of Newport Beach. And other than that action, no other, there's nothing else to report.
Okay. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance, led by Councilman Nichols, and we're going to have invocation from Father Trin from Our Lady Queen of Angels Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the children of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Reverend Titren, and thank you for having me here to share this special moment of spiritual reflection with you. And thank you for your hospitality. And in the spirit of thanksgiving and gratitude, let us now pause for a moment and be mindful of our blessings, gifts, and talents in our lives that each one of us bring to share in this wonderful community. Almighty and loving God, source of our life, liberty, and love, we ask for your guidance tonight for our mayor and city council, our city staff, and our citizens gathered here together to do what is good for our community. As you have blessed our community in so many ways, bless each one of us here tonight with the wisdom to know what is best for all our people, the courage to do what is right in every situation, the generosity of spirit and great patience in our working with each other, and the compassion to care for one another as we would like to be cared for. We ask this, trusting in your goodness and the everlasting love for us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Our next item, we have three presentations tonight. We'll start in reverse order. We're going to start with the Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Who's here to receive this? All right, well, we have a proclamation, basically, because no one's here, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically to recognize that the month of November 2005 is Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Newport Beach. And that's the gist of the proclamation. And I'll give it back to the city clerk, and she can formally present it. Thank you. We have two more presentations tonight. I'm going to have our own Marie Knight, head of our Recreation Service Department, tell us about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have two presentations that are related to our centennial. And before we begin with those presentations, I just wanted to give a plug for our upcoming, the next centennial event, which would be our Rose Parade float. We're currently accepting volunteers to help us decorate the float during the month of December. And if folks are interested in joining the fun, they can go to our website, which is NewportBeach100.com, and sign up. We need about 700 eager volunteers who don't mind getting covered with glue and flowers. The two presentations we have this evening are in recognition of two of our members of our community who have shared their creativity and their talents with us for our centennial. So in keeping with reverse order, the first one would be Louis Alvarado. Mr. Alvarado is the owner of Louis Alvarado Designs, which is here in Newport Beach on West Cliff Avenue. And he is the creator of our centennial logo, our NB100 logo. Mr. Alvarado answered a call for artists many months ago and submitted several creative designs, and ultimately, his NB100 logo was chosen to represent our centennial. His design work was all done on a pro bono basis, and has adorned everything from the street banners that currently appear throughout our city, discussing our centennial, to our advertisements, our marketing materials, and our merchandise. And we're very grateful that he chose to share his creativity and his talents with us. So we would like to recognize him for doing that. So I'd like to ask Louis Alvarado to come up to the podium. And the mayor has a proclamation.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. I don't need to read the presentation, because Marie did a very fine job explaining what you've done and your kind generosity to the city. So I'm going to present this to you, and also a gift as well.
I'd like to, your logo has been very well received. I have handed out literally several hundred of the pins that, as a matter of fact, the mayor has one on now, I believe. And so I, we applaud your artistic abilities, and thank you very much for creating it for us.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mayor. For you? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our second presentation is to Sharon Esterly. As many of you know, Sharon is a longtime Newport Beach resident and a professional event planner. And she stepped up and volunteered to chair our opening kickoff event, which was Let's Do Launch. I don't want to steal all the mayor's thunder, but as everyone who was in attendance knows, we had over 10,000 people show up on October 2nd to dance to the tunes of the Beach Boys and enjoy an old-fashioned, family fun day that kicked off our centennial in a way that will be remembered for many years. So we want to thank Sharon for her dedication and her time and sharing her talents. And on a personal note, I want to thank her for bringing a wonderful spirit, enthusiasm, and such a great positive energy to this event. She was an absolute pleasure to work with. My staff thoroughly enjoyed working with her, and without her talents and all of her hard work, the event just would not have been the great success it was. So please join me in thanking and welcoming Sharon Esterly.
Sorry, just important things.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. I mean, I want to give a backdrop, that kickoff, Let's Do Launch event, according to the Dunes, was the highest attendance event they've ever held at the Newport Dunes in all the years it's been there, just to let you know. And it far exceeded what they expected in attendance, as a matter of fact, just because of some of the delays and some of the concessions and whatnot. It didn't overwhelm the park, but it far exceeded the attendance, they thought, and it's because of work like you and the rest of the volunteers. I'm going to, I have a, we have a gift, and I'm going to read the proclamation first. "Whereas Sharon Esterly, a resident of Newport Beach, volunteered to chair the Newport Beach Centennial Let's Do Launch Celebration featuring the Beach Boys on October 2nd. Sharon was able to gather more than 50 volunteers to serve on her committee for that event. She worked diligently with these volunteers to provide an amazing celebration with over 10,000 people dancing to the music at the Newport Dunes Waterfront Resort, the Beach Boys. Sharon devoted literally hundreds of hours of her own time to ensure the success of the event, and she planned an event that exceeded all expectations for the kickoff of the centennial celebration of the City of Newport Beach. Therefore, on behalf of the entire city council and the entire city, we hereby recognize your volunteer leadership qualities offered to the city, and we thank you again, Sharon Esterly."
Thank you.
And Sharon, I would like to thank you also. It was just amazing that day, because you had everything from babies and carriages to people that might have been a little older than I, that were, was having a great time. And all of the items that we, I mean, all the people that I come across just rave about how much fun they had that day, and how great of a family event it was. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you mind if I say something? Okay? I can't go away without thanking the City of Newport Beach for the opportunity to be involved in this event, because I've lived in Newport Beach about 35, 6, 7 years. I love this city. I think it's the best place in the world to live, so I'm very pleased to be able to help celebrate that 100th birthday. I can, hope I can live long enough to celebrate the, maybe not the 200th, but the 125th. But I have to say that the credit for this event really goes to my committee, the people from Newport Beach, and even people from outside of Newport Beach, who begged to be allowed to participate, because they love the city as well. And, you know, Hillary said, "It takes a village to raise a family, raise a child. It takes many villages to put on an event for the City of Newport Beach," and all the villages of Newport Beach participated and worked really hard, and everybody had lots of other things on their plates and lots of other priorities, and they dropped them all and made this happen. So everyone on my committee deserves the greatest applause. The city staff have been fabulous to work with, and the support of the council, of course, has made all this possible. So thank you very much for the honor I accepted in the name of everybody who participated and made this happen. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to add another piece of information for Mr. Alvarado's interest in the council and the communities, our planning commissioner, Bob Hawkins, came into our office one day about six, seven months ago, and assisted us in making a copyright application for Mr. Alvarado's design, and so that has been copyrighted. So we do have copyright protection for that design as well.
That's good. That's great. Good thinking. Okay, next item is the announcements by the city council members themselves. I'll start with you, Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Joe Sansky?
Yes, I have one. This morning, I had breakfast with one of our Arts Foundation members, Lila Crispin, and she was telling me about a function that they're going to be having. It's a fundraising function on December 4th. It's a Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's, the event's going to take place at a home in Big Canyon. A gentleman there has, from what I understand, a multimillion-dollar collection of antique toys. And so for any of you folks out in the audience or in TV land that are interested in that, I think it's going to be a great opportunity to view this collection. I understand that there'll be wine, music, and hors d'oeuvres. It should be a fun evening, and it'll help support the arts in our community. For anybody who wants to get in touch with Lila, I'll give you her email address. That's how she said we should contact her. And it's Lila Crispin, or Crispin, L.I.L.A.C.R.E.S.P.I.N. at sbcglobal.net. There's only 100 people that can attend this function, so I would suggest you contact her, you know, as soon as possible. But it sounds like it's going to be a fun evening, and certainly something worth viewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
Yes, I have an announcement. This is the centennial moment. Just to remind everybody, there are 282 days until September 1st, when we turn 100 years old. Things that have happened before the city council on November 22nd in various different years. In 1920, Harbor Master Beak came to the council and was concerned, because at very, very low tides, there was too much mud between the island and the mainland, and he wanted to get it dredged. And the council considered this and talked about it, and they said, "Well, we might be able to match what the citizens can match." So they proposed to put together a matching arrangement where the islanders would pay for 50% of the dredging. So that was, it was something that the Harbor Master Beak was supposed to go out and see if he could get interest in. Then in 1954, Inspiration Point on Ocean Boulevard was something that was actually purchased by the citizens, and so that was when the city put up a $3,500 matching check to purchase that point from, along with the state. In 1965, out in the airport area, we were talking about that in our general planning effort, the Public Works Director had requested that the streets for Birch, MacArthur, and Campus Drive, the construction projects, be accepted on that. So that was to let that portion of the community be completed. Another thing that I've been doing to celebrate the centennial is started on September 1st to walking all the public streets in town. I'm now up to about 105 miles and have seen Councilmember Heffernan out on his bicycle in one instance, and Mr. Ridgway gardening in front of his house. And so it's a wonderful way to see the city, and I recommend that all of you that have a chance during this, well, anytime, but particularly during this year, get out and go to areas of your community that you haven't seen before, and enjoy how wonderful a place Newport Beach is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgway?
I have nothing.
Okay. Consomdeagle?
No.
Consomde Nichols? Okay. I have something. Last meeting, we initiated a toy drive and gift drive for our troops. And I'm going to read this. This is from our city clerks. We are a collection site. "In cooperation with the YellowRibbonAmerica.com, California State Legislature and the National Guard Association of Californians and the City of Newport Beach is promoting Operation Christmas for our troops, too. City Clerk's office, which is on-site here, will be accepting donations of new unwrapped, no unwrapped, toys for children of our military, as well as new and/or used DVDs, which I assume can be in any, any shape, for the troops from now until December 21st. Cash donations are also needed to cover the cost of shipping and to assist California military families in need. Donations are accepted during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, at the Clerk's office, which is right opposite the city council chambers here. For more information, you can call the city clerk, 644-3005, 644-3005, or the website is YellowRibbonAmerica, that's all one word, dot com. And please help our troops, and have a rosy Merry Christmas." Okay? That's the end of my announcements. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, all matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 12, and supplemental Item 17 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium."
Okay, the first item would be preference of the city council members, if they want to pull any of the items on the consent agenda. Start with you, Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Mr. Sansky?
None, thank you.
Mr. Webb?
None.
We're batting very, good batting so far. Okay. Mr. Ridgway?
None.
Councilman Dagel?
None, but, and I may be out of order. If I wanted to have Number 16 continued, what would be the process to do that?
16 is...
The naming of the park?
That's not, not at this time, right?
I think making the announcement now, saying that it's your intention to make the motion to have it continued, would be the best way to let people know that.
Okay, thank you.
But let's be clear about this. It's not continued until this council continues it. So making an announcement doesn't mean anything until we actually do it. Because that's, that's a later part of the agenda. Okay. All right. Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I do not want to poll anything, but I would like to register a no vote on one item. That's AS 17. And I believe that's on the consent calendar.
Yes, it is.
And that's the Fire Management Association, MOU, and I, I just can't go for 3% at 50. That's an unsustainable value, according to accountants that I've talked to.
Okay, and we'll, and we'll bring that back and let you vote on that in particular. Mr. Blue Down?
If no other items are polled, I mean, that motion could be made to recognize the no vote of Councilman Nichols.
All right, we'll do that, but let's, we'll open to the public, and then we'll...
I have no items to poll.
Okay, and how about the public? Do you have any items on the consent agenda? I don't think I've ever been here. We haven't had anything. We almost, we almost have had it a thousand, and we almost can turn off the lights. Okay, can we make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move affirmative action of the consent...
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't want to start a new precedence here, so... No, it's fine. I expected it.
I'm BJ Johnson, and I'm chairman of the Corona del Mar Residents Association. And I actually left in the car Leslie Dagel's shirt that she bought a long time ago from the Residents Association. We have our own shirts and little, and I was going to present it to you tonight, because you keep forgetting, but it's in the car. Mainly, I just wanted to mention that our Residents Association has a website, and we've been getting a lot of response...
This is, this is consent agenda pulling...
This is public comment, I thought.
No, no, no.
Oh!
You're a little early. Not much early, but we're moving pretty fast tonight.
So you didn't mess up our precedent after all.
Okay. No, no, don't leave. Okay. Mr. Ridgway?
Nothing.
We're going to make a motion.
I move affirmative action of Items 1 through 12 and S 17 with an indication that Councilmember Nichols has voted no on Item S 16.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries. Item number 13 is the Santa Barbara condominiums, 900 Newport Center Drive.
Mr. Blue Down, you want to make a comment on this early?
I think I would like the representative for Lenore to make a, an announcement regarding a possible continuation for council's consideration.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City, Newport Beach City Council. I have submitted a letter...
Can we have, we...
Sorry.
Identify who you are.
Yes, Coralie Newman, Principal of Government Solutions.
Great.
230 Newport Center Drive, here in Newport Beach. I am the Lenore Holmes representative this evening, and we are respectfully requesting... I am the Lenar Holmes representative this evening, and we are respectfully requesting a continuance on this public hearing on behalf of the Newport Beach Country Club. We have had ongoing discussions with them, but they did call today asking that this item be continued, and Lenar has agreed to request that from the council. We have just some final detailed items with them that haven't been resolved, mutually resolved, and they've asked us to ask for a continuance.
Okay, so that's the action item before us. Mr. Webb?
What day would you, what date would you wish to continue this to?
December 13th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, there's just one issue between Lenar and the neighboring property owner that they hope to resolve between now and the 13th. So staff would recommend that the City Council go ahead and hold the public hearing and hear other speakers and probably resolve all but that one issue so that we don't have this public hearing as well as another public hearing that we have scheduled on the 13th and make that agenda too long.
But isn't the request that this matter be continued and we hold it all at once, rather than to hear, and then hear it again?
Well, you don't, you wouldn't need to...
What is the, what is the action item before tonight? All the conditions?
Yes.
And we would bifurcate that, a specific condition that involves a golf course?
No, I wouldn't recommend that you take any action this evening, but hold the public hearing so that you take care of the time-consuming part of the item, and then, assuming they can resolve this one issue, you can take action fairly quickly on December 13th.
But I'm hearing that from you, and I didn't hear that from the applicant. The applicant asked for a...
If that's the council's wishes, we're willing to hear that.
No, no, but you're the applicant, you know, so what do you want?
We're requesting a continuance.
A full continuance, a full hearing de novo on the 13th?
That's what we...
If, if you had your way. That's what you'd want.
As long as we can be on December 13th, yes.
Okay. Now, that, that is the alternative. Now, you'd rather not, not agree to that and have the hearing now?
I just think that that will make it easier for the City Council on the 13th because there's another project that we have scheduled for public hearing, and I'm just concerned it would make the meeting long.
Oh.
When did, when did that ever matter?
That's Sharon talking, not the city manager.
I haven't been working on the City Hall project.
All right. All right, well, let's, let's hear from the rest of the council.
I say just continue it till 13.
Continue it altogether?
Yeah.
That's one.
Mr. Mayor, could you ask the audience how many people would wish to talk about this item?
Who's here to talk about item 13? Santa Barbara condominiums, Newport Center project.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't go ahead and continue it then.
All right.
I'll make the motion to continue it.
Second.
Okay.
To December 13th.
Okay.
Thank you.
That being said, we have a motion. I have to open up to the public. All right, I'm going to close public here, and I'm going to bring it back. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. City clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, this is a general public comment period. So if you have any general public comments, come on up.
BJ, this would be the time.
Oh, we have Officer, are you going to make public comments?
Yes, I do, sir.
Good. Please do so. Identify yourself.
Detective Garrity with the Newport Beach Police. The chief was going to do this, but he asked me because since I'm so closer to this. Recently, Irvine Police has arrested a very prolific burglar. He was responsible for like 20 years of burglaries. We think he's responsible for many burglaries in our city as well. Irvine Police has graciously designated December 1st a showing day of thousands of pieces of property, mainly jewelry, that's been recovered. Alls we're asking is that you're a victim of a crime of a burglary. They are asking that you get a copy of your report. You need to call the number 949-644-3662. That's Sergeant Hartford. We're taking reservations to do a showing of this property. Again, that's not 644-3662, that's a Sergeant Hartford, and that's going to be on December 1st. It'll be at Irvine PD. It'll be from like 8 to 5 that day, and depending on the response we get, if we need a second day, we'll schedule a second day, but that's what's scheduled right now.
Okay. So that 644-3662 number is the Newport Beach PD number?
Yes, sir. Sergeant Hartford.
And Sergeant Hartford.
We have something, we have something in the newspaper right now about it, but we want to get something on the cable.
This guy was a burglar and a hoarder. He just, he just, he kept all the stuff he, or a large part of it.
I think of the details. He had, he had some coin dealer, I heard, that was either melting down some of the jewelry, but recovered a bunch of stuff.
Okay. Good. 644-3662. All right.
Officer, before you go, is there a list of the property that's for viewing, or so someone could actually go and look and see if their property is on the list or potentially on the list, or do you know?
No list has been prepared.
So you just kind of have to...
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council staff. My name is Wayne Zippy. I live on East Bay Avenue on the peninsula. I believe this comes within purview of the council because it was brought up in the council last year, and I'd like to bring it up again this year. It may seem minor to some people, but to a lot of us, it's extremely important. As you're all aware, there's a huge tree down at the end of the peninsula, or at the end of the divided part of the peninsula. And last year, the lights were taken off the tree, and that was because two people, as I understand it, complained and said it was too Christian, and they didn't want the lights on the tree. So the trees were taken off. All the 23 years that I've been here, we've had lights on that tree every year. I'd like to ask the council to either look into it, consider it, or have the city managers see if we can get those lights put back in the tree. Again, it's important to us. It's part of a national holiday. It's part of a national event. We're all involved in it, all over the world, we're involved in it, and the lights are one of those things that signify some of the beliefs that we have. If you take it away and you don't put it back, you're pandering to the people that want to take under God and in God we trust out of our lives, and I don't think it's a thing to do. I think we've rolled over enough in this country for the people that want to, you know, the tail wagging the dog, and I don't think we need to do that any longer. Again, please stand up against a couple of people and go with the majority. And I would ask that the people watching tonight and the people in the audience here, at least let the council know what their feelings are, and you will know that it is a majority. We don't need to let a godless institution like the ACLU govern the way we do things because those are the things that they want, and I think we can stand up to them. Roger Baldwin founded the ACLU and was an avowed communist, admitted he was, and he was proud of it. Well, we don't need that here. We don't need it, we don't want it. Let's not be afraid of them. Let's stand up and do what we want to do. Put the lights on, light on the trees, let the Christians side of it here as well as around the world show and be proud of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway, you have a comment on that?
Well, I wish Mr. Zippy would have called me, but Homer, perhaps you and I can talk to, I think it's the Balboa Merchants Association that annually puts that up with the help of the fire department.
That's right. It isn't the city lights that go on the tree.
No, no, it isn't. It's just a facility, the hook and ladder, but perhaps you can call me and we can find out who has the lights. I don't even know who has them.
But it's a city tree, it is a city tree.
It's, it's in the city right of way, but the, the lights are put there, I believe, by the Balboa Merchants Owners Association and as an annual event with the help of our fire department.
Okay. Good. Next up?
Could I approach the fire?
Bring them up. That's great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members. I am Frank Cisneros, and this is Tim Martin. We are volunteers of the Bob Cole Sailing Foundation, and we are here tonight to introduce our organization, ourselves, and our needs for the upcoming holiday parade. Along, excuse me. The Bob Cole Sailing Foundation is a nonprofit organization founded in 2003 to provide educational and recreational sailing activities to those who would not otherwise have access to this sport, including at-risk youth and other needy community members. We are currently looking for more volunteers and supporters for the parade where we will be taking some group home kids from Olive Crest out aboard our 58-foot yacht, Black Silver. You may have seen us sailing up and down the bay. We have an important partnership with the Boy Scouts and the Newport Sea Base, which is where the ship is located, and you may contact us at 949-636-7600 or VKSF.org on the web, and we are available for any questions you may have of us concerning this. None? Well, thank you very much for your time. We do appreciate it.
Okay, let me ask you, when they phone this number, who should they be asking for?
Jane Hartley.
Good. All right, Jane Hartley at 636-7600.
Yes, sir.
Vocal call. Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Try one more time. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This shirt is for Leslie. Leslie bought it a long time ago, and it has the Cron Del Mar Residents Association's logo on it. And we have a website, and our website is crondelmarresidentsassociation.com, and I just wanted to say that we're getting a lot of feedback regarding things that we put on our website, are things such as crosswalks, where do we want to have them located, City Hall, we have comments on where it should be located, what we're, what's going on in the city. A lot of things come back to us on our website and through our emails that we answer. Karen Tringali was a very, is a member of our board, and she was instrumental in getting this going for us. And I just want to let you know that when we first started, we had about 155 emails in March, email addresses, so now we have 255. So when there's something affecting Cron Del Mar or the city that we feel should go out to the people quickly, we can do it through our emails. So we feel like we've really accomplished a lot, and we hope that we can help the city too via our website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the jersey, BJ. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dolores Otting. Happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, and Merry Christmas. What I have here is the Mariners Mile Gateway Project, which is the mitigated negative declaration that will not be coming before you because it does not have a general plan amendment, it isn't part of green light, and it doesn't exceed anything or need anything extra. This is the technical appendices, okay, that goes with that project, which weighs more than a baby. So anyway, the reason why I bring this up to you is because last night at EQUAC, it was, well, first of all, on October 25th, you approved item number 6, which was to pay the consultant, RFB, an additional $46,000, okay, to do an additional traffic impact analysis, air quality, and noise. We've already done that. I didn't make copies of this because you have it all, okay? So that led the public and myself to believe that that was what was going to be happening, all right? This doc, then, thank God for Councilmember Ridgway, at the meeting of November 8th, he has to thank God, that you told Mr. Billings that, you know, "Well, you better hurry up and comment because it's almost at the end of the comment cycle." And I'm like watching at home thinking, "How can it be at the end of the comment cycle when you only approved on the 25th to do further impact analysis and further air quality?" So that was very misleading to the public. Then come to find out, I go pick up the document, and the document says October 31st, 2005, so five days later, okay, although inside says October 31st, five days later, this thing was available for public comment and review. And I thought, when I heard your comments, I went down and picked it up, and I thought, "How could they get that document all together in such a short period of time?" So that brings me to the EQUAC meeting last night, where I find out that evidently the traffic analysis supposedly, I spoke to Jim Campbell today, who told me that it was included, but last night, from a principal owner of Government Solutions, who is the lead agent on this document or getting this through you, okay, and also from a member of the city, we were told last night at EQUAC, and Councilmember Nichols was there, so he can attest to that. I missed you last night, Councilmember Rosansky, we could have used you, that the final analysis was not part of the document. So what happened was Mr. Campbell was kind enough to make, today, to me, to give me a copy of what's called a traffic signal warrant analysis that is not included in this document, which is 12 pages long, and also a document called queuing, okay, which is important in this project because that's part of the problem we have when you try to get into avocado to the medical buildings, you get hung up on San Miguel because of queuing. When you go down to Hospital Road and try to turn on flagship, the problem you have with traffic is because of queuing. So these are two important documents that are not included in this document that is going to be heard, okay? Public comments are up on the 29th. I guess my comment will be that I think we need it recirculated with these added. I did not make a copy of these for you, but I did email them to you this afternoon, so you have them on your computers at home. I guess I can email a copy to the Planning Commission also. I was extremely disappointed. I think a couple of you might have gotten some emails from some people during, from EQUAC, or maybe one person in particular. So anyway, it was very disheartening because this project will not be coming to you unless it is appealed, and it has some larger, it has some large impacts and a lot of documentation, and I think that we need some reconsideration on the, on the things that were omitted. Thank you.
Excuse me? I just wondered, what project is this again? Just explain where it is and what project it is.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
Well, no, I was just going to do that.
Thank you.
It's a Dover and PCH, it's the retail project that would start at Dover and extend. I guess that would be north toward McDonald's. How many square, how many square feet, Sharon?
I believe 35,000. Nope. 56.
All right, 56,000 square feet. And specifically, what are the action items that are required by our code for that project? I mean, as I understand, it's not coming to us. It is nothing required now by the City Council to approve it.
That's correct.
So what is required?
There's a development plan review because that's part of the overlay in Mariners Mile, and there is a use permit to exceed the base height limit in the area, and then there's a traffic study pursuant to the traffic phasing ordinance.
And those are all items that would, those will be approved by the Planning Commission?
Yes.
And if, and if the Planning Commission approves it, then it will be subject to appeal at this level?
Correct.
But if not appealed, the Planning Commission's decision would be all it would take to proceed?
That's right.
All right, Selig?
Well, doesn't the traffic signal come to the council eventually?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the traffic signal and the street improvements are actually under the purview of Caltrans. That's, that's section of Coast Highway, State Highway, and they would have to obtain a permit from Caltrans in order to construct those improvements.
Okay.
So then this would only come to us by overview of what's going through the council, I mean, the Planning Commission, and we would have to then appeal that, right?
That's correct, and that's because it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning.
And it doesn't trigger green light, and the fact is, I mean, if I understand our rules, it's going to take, if it gets approved by the Planning Commission, it'll take four of us, the majority of the council, to, to appeal it. Is that correct?
Yes, or, or an interested member of the public.
Or an interested member who will pay the freight.
Yes.
Whatever it is, $900 or whatever, to appeal it.
I haven't seen any, anything on this at all, though I understand it has two-story underground parking in an area that's almost below sea level. My question is, is some of this seems to me like it's, that's undermining a cliff almost there. Why did this not have some oversight from EQUAC?
Because EQUAC reviews environmental impact reports and not negative declarations, and the environmental document on this is a negative declaration.
But I cannot see how this didn't have environmental impacts if it's a two-story underground garage completely under the property, and the property is a cliff along Coast Highway, and Coast Highway is very close to sea level.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think since this is not on the council's agenda, that getting into the specifics of the project may not be appropriate.
Mr. Nichols, if you'd like to go through the plan with me, I'd be glad to go through the document that Ms. Otting presented and discuss some of those items. I believe that to have an environmental impact, you have to have something that really can't be mitigated, and I believe that their mitigations are adequate in there. But that's not a topic of the agenda right now, so why don't we get together and we can go through it and, and address some of your concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ridgway.
I, I have a question for Public Works Director. Are you saying, Steve, that we have, we can't oppose a traffic signal? I, I guess.
We could oppose a traffic signal, and, and I think Caltrans would, would probably take that into consideration, but from, I guess legally, we do not have any rights. If, if Caltrans wanted to put a signal anywhere along that section of highway, or do whatever kind of work on that highway that they desired, we really do not have the legal authority to stop them.
Do you know what the 12-page warrant study suggested?
I have not reviewed the report.
It suggests, I think, again, we're out, we're not discussing this.
Yeah, this is a little bit outside of the public comment realm. I apologize.
Good.
I would like to see this as a staff item, though, so that we understand what the project is. This is a pretty good-sized project down there.
But it isn't coming before City Council unless you call it up.
Well, if we ask to call it up or ask to have it reviewed, can we not have it reviewed?
Mr. Mayor, if, if Councilmember Nichols wants to learn more about the project, he's welcome to come down and look at the project, and staff, I'm sure, can go over it with him, so they'll understand, and I think Councilmember Webb wanted to do it, but it's within the realm of the council to review this project after it gets through the Planning Commission, and that hasn't started yet, so it's premature to be discussing it at the council level.
Well, I guess on the other hand, there's a time limit to appeal.
The Planning Commission hasn't acted yet. The time limit is for public comment on the environmental document.
And when's the schedule before the Planning Commission?
I don't know.
Well, well, let's, let's, all right. All right, well, let's, let's go forward here. It's not supposed to come before us, but it's going to be a pretty good-sized project. You know, well, I mean, people will drive by it, anybody in the city, and the question is for the council, if, how are we ever going to get informed of it?
You will be informed in the same manner, the Planning Commission, the Planning Director will give a report on the action of the Planning Commission on this item, and then you will have the time period within that. If four members of the council want to call it up and consider it, you can call it up and consider it.
No, no, I'm not talking about a conclusion that's been reached by the Planning Commission. I mean, there have been questions here tonight where people really are not up to speed with a pretty dominant, pretty large project, and how would, how would we get information ahead of that? If in fact the council wanted to be briefed on it in general, could it be a study session item, or not?
No.
Could not, okay, it's fine.
No, that's outside, that's outside of the process that our zoning code sets up for approval of projects. The council does not usually, and the zoning code is not set up for the council to review a project and consider a project before the Planning Commission has even had a chance to review it. So if individual council members have interest in the project, and they want to go to the planning department and check with a, with a planner, the, I'm sure the planner can go through the project with them if they want to learn a little bit more about it.
Or, or we could request some sort of summary of the project being included in one of our information packets, right? Isn't that public information?
Sure, well, and the staff report, you could, the other thing you could do would be to request a copy of the staff report when it goes to the Planning Commission, so that the council will have all that information as well.
All right, how's that sound?
Yeah.
Good, all right. Long-winded, we started well.
Does that be a formal, do we have to formally ask that?
No, it'll, we'll just, we'll just do it.
I think there's enough interest, we'll do it.
We'll just do it.
I just wondered whether we had to make an, a motion or something.
Nope, all right. Next up.
Tom Billings. I would also like to speak to the Mariners Gate Project. I guess what I'm hearing just now in that discussion is, is good news, because it's validating to me, Mr. Ridgway's concerns on, on the traffic light, Mr. Nichols' questions, Mr. Heselich has brought up some, some questions before and others, that, hey, you guys want to be brought up to speed. Now, you have your process at the Planning Commission, and, and, you know, when you're supposed to step in and not step in. And I know it doesn't trigger green light, and I know that there's some, some legal zoning things that are going on, but it does trigger a major impact on our community and the quality of life in our city. And again, just for the public, I'm talking about a traffic light between Dover and Babo Bay Club, boom, right at McDonald's. So tonight, I, I, well, let me, let me just say, since, two weeks ago, where I first learned about this project, I've been speaking to some other people in town, particularly up in the Newport Heights and Cliffhaven neighborhoods, no, no expansion group, and those folks, a lot of them didn't know about this, and, just like I think, well, you guys obviously know about it, but you have a lot of questions, and we have a lot of questions. And so I, I also spoke with the engineer, city planner, on this project. I'm not a traffic engineer or developer, but I did look at the plans, and apparently the way the in-and-out, ingress egress is designed right now, there's two ins and one out, which I understand from my developer friends who build retail centers, that doing a combined in-and-out, two of those in-and-outs instead of two ins and one out, will greatly improve the traffic flow and potentially not require a traffic signal. I did also contact Caltrans and, in studying their policies. Yes, there is 150,000 underground two-story level parking structure that's being proposed, which has never been attempted in the city, that's below mean-tide line. Talking about pollution, environmental impact, estimated amount of dirt to remove is 90,000-plus cubic yards, which according to, again, my, my friends who are engineers, that this could take 10,000 truck trips, including turnarounds. The planned direction to remove the dirt is west to Newport Boulevard or east to Jamboree. So you'll add to this an estimated 1,000 additional truck trips to bring concrete and building materials to the site. This, the two-story structure construction will be done during daylight hours, since the city has ordinance against construction at night. So there is environmental impact on the air pollution generated by the project, and this, again, I know the Planning Commission is going to look at that, but I'm not the only resident that's concerned about this, and, and the impact it will have, you know, along that stretch of, of PCH, in, in terms of, of traffic and congestion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. That's great. All right, just for the public, it's called Mariners Gate, it's 56,000 square feet, potential underground parking, PCH Dover Drive, Mariners Gate, it's going to come before the Planning Commission early next year, some point, is that right? Potentially?
I think it's December 8th.
December 8th. December 8th, Planning Commission, Mariners Gate, 56,000 square feet, Dover and PCH. Dover, between Dover along PCH to McDonald's. Everybody should know what this is going to be, re, new planned retail development. Okay, next up.
My hope is that it could come to council, and that there could be public discussion. Thank you.
Well, if you want public discussion, then the Planning Commission's the next stop. It's good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Paul Glowinski. City Council Members, on a lighter note, I'm very happy to see a couple of Christmas ties on the council this evening. I'm here to remind the council and the public that we have but 12 days until the Corona del Mar Christmas Walk. December 4th is the date. It's bigger and better this year. There will include a beer garden, of all things, at Banderas Parking Lot, as well as at the Honey Big Ham Store, and there is also a rain date this year, in case there is rain, knock on wood that it doesn't happen, but if there is rain, then December 11th is the rain date. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, December 4th, Corona del Mar Walk, Christmas Walk, okay? Okay, anybody else up? Here's your chance. General public comment? Okay, I'll cut, I'll cut that off. All right, City Clerk?
Oral reports from City Council on committee activities.
Okay, Mr. Selich.
We have had no GPUC meeting since our last council meeting, therefore I have no report.
Well, okay, LCP. Mr. Ridgway.
You caught me too quick, but we did have a, a meeting last, I think it was last week, where we discussed the contents of the, of the approval from the Coastal Commission. The committee wanted to fully review that before it was sent to council, so it will be sent to council. Do you know when, Sharon?
December 13th.
December 13th? Okay, and the committee will be needing. We're starting, we're commencing with the implementation plan, and I'm just, do you know when the date is, the first meeting? Didn't we?
Of, of the next committee meeting? No, I, I was not at your last meeting.
I'm looking for.
Oh, the Planning Director is here. She doesn't have her calendar.
But we did, we did set a meeting, didn't, didn't we? We set a date, time and date. Ed, do you have it?
No, I don't think we did. I think Patrick was going to get back to us.
Okay, then there's not a meeting date set at this point in time, but we will be commencing with the implementation plan, and the intent of the committee, assuming that the council approves the approved Coastal Commission approval, is hopefully by mid-year to approve the implementation plan, that is, the council will, and then we'll send the whole package back up to Coastal Commission for final approval. And hopefully in the year 2006, we'll have an LCP.
Good, thank you. Next time, Newport Coast, I have nothing to report. Mariners Joint Youth Library, Mr. Webb?
Nothing other than it's getting closer and closer to occupancy. Item two would be the Marina Park, which we don't have anything new on that committee. And as far as Centennial is concerned, if you've tuned in late and missed Marie Knight's announcement, we have plenty of opportunities to glue flowers on our float. Primary activity will be between the 26th of December and the 1st of January. I think that we will need about 50 people per shift, and we're running two shifts a day. We have a lot of interest so far, but there's plenty of spaces left, so go to www.nportbeach100.com and pick on the Rose Float, and you'll see an ability to, to volunteer. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgway, on the other Marina Park Committee, nothing?
Mayor?
Well, hold on, hold on. The other committee activities?
Yes, being on one of the SCAG committees, as you probably know, within the SCAG regional plan, there's huge components of Maglev transportation, and when I was in Shanghai, I got a ride on the world's only Maglev system, and with me was Duncan Forgay, who's on our Centennial Heritage Committee, and also Newport Beach resident Bob Washer. He owned the first BMW dealership in Orange County, and the, the train was really fast, and it really started to shake once it got over 400 kilometers an hour. So it was a very great ride, and one of these days, we may have one of these in Orange County.
Let me report on that real quick. The intent of SCAG, which master plans all our roads, our housing needs, and our, our airports. The concept right now at SCAG is for a decentralized airport system, and the decentralized system would include Orange County, LA, Ontario, and the intent is to have a SCAG, or a Maglev from LAX to Ontario, and then from Ontario through Santa Ana Canyon for the decentralized airport system. So Maglev has a keen interest in SCAG's eyes.
Just for us on engineers, can you tell us what that abbreviation means? That's fine.
But, yeah, it's a magnetic.
It's a high-speed train, magnetic levitation train. That, that is above the track, as I understand, it's a very high-speed means of transportation.
Fast ride.
Fast ride.
240 miles an hour.
240 miles an hour, so that's pretty fast. Okay.
I have one more.
Public comment's over, so is this to have anything to do with the committees? Wait a minute, we don't do it that way. So, only because. Good, all right. All right.
John?
Mr. Nichols?
I have two committees. Environmental Affairs Committee had a meeting and discussed quite a few different things, and their next meeting will be on the 12th, I mean, on December the 19th. The second thing is the Santa Ana River Flood Control, and I, that's a $1.3 billion project to protect our basin. They estimate that if we had a 100-year flood, that it would cost 3,000 lives and $15 billion worth of property if this project isn't completed. To date, on the last flood, they had 124 and a half million dollars in claims, so, and that didn't include the price of the water that we lost down the Santa Ana River, which I understand was over $50 million worth of water. So this is a pretty important project, and it's something that we need to finish the funding on, which is mainly buying up the properties so we can put the water behind the dam. And there's properties which are mostly the, the cattle farms in, in the Chino area that, that need to be purchased to finish that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next item, because we're, we're all on live TV, how many here are just talking the City Hall project tonight? Can I have a show of hands? Well, I just want to announce to the public that we have less than 15 people that are going to speak on a City Hall project of roughly $50 million that's been advertised in the news, in the newspaper, letters written about. So if you want to come down and speak, it's time to get in your car and get down here, because I would say this is a very, very modest showing, and I wouldn't, I would not use that term. I think it's a pretty crappy showing of public interest in this project, if we have 15 people that are willing to speak on a $50 million project that's been almost continually in the newspaper for going on a half year at least. But that's what it is. You have your chance. It's 8:05 right now. If you want to come down and speak, then come on down and be, and join our audience, because it's an important matter for the city. Not that, telling you to do anything, but it would be good to get as much public input as we can. This is an action item to be voted on tonight, according to our agenda. Okay, I'm going to go back. City Clerk, can you bring the next item?
Item number 14 is the Planning Commission Agenda for November 17th.
Patty Temple, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Planning Commission had a relatively easy night of it last Thursday night. There were three items on their agenda, one of which was continued. The public hearing item was a proposal for a transfer of development rights and a traffic phasing ordinance approval from Fashion Island to Corporate Plaza West within the Newport Center area to allow the construction of a 42,000-square-foot office building. Corporate Plaza West is the project which is a long coast highway westerly of Newport Center Drive, between Newport Center Drive and the Country Club and Tennis Club. So it's those kind of orangish buildings with the white accents they would be adding a third building to. The item went, wrote really quickly. Commission did discuss a little bit about the advisability of the conversion of retail entitlement to office entitlement, but still felt comfortable with the project and recommended, recommended it? Yes, recommended it for approval by a unanimous vote. It will be coming to you, and because of the heavy agenda on December the 13th, I would expect you will see it on your agenda on January the 10th. The other item was act, yes, sir?
What's the action item for the City Council?
Transfer of development rights pursuant to the land use element.
Good, thank you.
The Planning Commission did consider the land use element policies, as you did this afternoon. They met in study session starting at 3:00, then adjourned to the regular meeting, and then continued on with their discussion of land use policies after the public hearing item. They did get through the exact same items that you considered this afternoon, and you got a report on exactly what they recommended earlier today, so. Oh, and one other thing, the Mariners Mile Gateway Project will be on the meeting of December 8th at the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Patty Temple?
Will that be on the Planning Commission Agenda, December 8th, or ours?
Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
You don't meet on the 8th.
I didn't think so, but I, I just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Good. All right, one last time. Mariners, Mariners Gateway Project, 56,000 square feet. Say it again, Dover, along PCH to the McDonald's. It's on December 8th, Planning Commission. You want to be heard? Come on down.
I might add that it's 56,000 square feet, but it's replacing close to 19,000 square feet, so it's only an increase of about 31,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Patty. City Clerk?
Item number 15 is the Building Committee's recommendations to City Council as to what actions to take regarding the Civic Center Project.
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda is a report from the Building Committee. It was composed of Councilmember Ridgway, Councilmember Webb, and Councilmember Selich. We also have a staff report that talks about a couple of important items associated with the question regarding Civic Center Project and whether to move forward with that, and those issues are financing and relocation. But I think it would be best to start off this presentation with having Roger Torero from Griffin Structures talk about his completion of his contract with the city in order to produce 20% schematics.
Okay. We'll, we'll do that. We'll get a detail of. We'll get a detail of all of that fine work and what the conclusion was. But specifically, what is the action item ultimately before the City Council tonight?
I think the ultimate action item is what does the City Council want to do with the Civic Center Project? A basic question, even part of that, is, is a City Hall and Civic Center project needed?
Where do we go from here?
And where do we go from here? Okay, the first step is to have a conclusionary report from Griffin on what they've done on the design phase of that contract, right?
That's right.
And the summary of their findings, okay?
Because the first recommendation from the Building Committee, and it was unanimous, was to accept the contract as being fulfilled with this presentation, if Council finds that acceptable.
Okay, any other questions before we get started? Okay, Homer, please proceed.
Mayor Heffernan, members of the Council. I'm Roger Torero. I'm the President of Griffin Structures. And over the last four and a half years or so, I've had the opportunity, the frustration, the challenge, and I've even had the pleasure of shepherding this project to where it is this evening. As you know, we've gone through countless hours of community outreach. We've gone through countless meetings with building committees. We've seen council members come and council members go. We've seen new council members. We've seen new mayors. We've seen old mayors. We've sort of seen it all. This certainly has been a unique experience for us. And I would say that the project presented this evening represents what I would call a consortium of ideas. And specifically, it is a project that is first and foremost, not our project, it's your project. It is the City of Newport Beach's project. There seems to be sometimes, I think, a little confusion that this is our project and we're promoting this. In reality, this is your project, and you're voting or not voting for it. I find it interesting also that as we've gone through this project, we've had the opportunity to meet many members of the community. Frankly, as Mayor Heffernan pointed out, maybe not as many as we thought we would have met, but certainly a few, certainly some of the same few. And we've also had the opportunity to go on green tours, lead tours. We've looked at countless design solutions. We've looked at alternatives. We've worked with Councilman Webb through looking at several alternatives to preserving various components of the buildings, or structures, or portions of structures and new structures. We've gone through design review committees, we've got building committees. And what you see tonight is the culmination of that effort. This is the reflection of the instructions we have been given. This is a design solution for the current site, which we are sitting on today. It is a design solution that has been well massaged, for lack of a better word, by the Building Committee members over the course of their varied 10 years on that committee. And I'm very pleased, this evening frankly, to present this project to you, your project. And I'm going to introduce Rick D'Amato, who's the Lead Designer for LPA Architects. And Rick will present the concept. I will then present the schematic budget estimate, and that will conclude our presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. It's good to see you all again. It feels like it's been a while, so. Tonight, I'm going to kind of go through the process that we took to get to where we are today, and along with the final sort of design direction that we've achieved through the schematic design process. We're going to look at the site design. We're going to look at the floor plans. We're going to look at the aesthetics of the buildings. We're going to look at environmental design. And as Roger said, we're also going to be looking at the schematic design budget estimate. The site plan went through a lot of different iterations. As you're well aware, we are looking at this particular site where the City Hall currently resides. There's lots of real good reasons why City Hall should stay here. There's a sense of history. This was where the City of Newport Beach started in 1889. This is where it all began. The City Hall's been on this current site since the 1940s. So there is a sort of historic precedent for this site. There's a sense of economy. The city owns this property. They don't have to go out and buy additional land to build a City Hall. The whole idea of sustainability. You're developing previously developed property. You're not going out and building on open space or, God forbid, park property, as has been suggested. There's also a sense of civic responsibility, in that you're creating an incentive for local improvement, specifically in the fact that there is a large, wonderful green space out in front of this building. It's probably one of the last green spaces on the peninsula right now. I could almost guarantee that if another developer came in and started looking at this site, that that green space would be lost. And it is, like I said, one of the last remaining green spaces on the peninsula, and it does create that whole sense of civic pride. Of course, we looked at the condition of the existing buildings, and that's really why we are here tonight. Currently, no building meets current seismic design requirements, excuse me. The existing fire station does not meet the requirements of an essential facility, which is the OCFA standard. There are ADA violations which are widespread, with no building complying with ADA requirements. HVA systems and electrical systems are all individually building-based. This causes gross energy efficiencies and is very costly to operate, maintain, and service. There's been considerable deferred maintenance, and there's an ongoing expense because of that deferred maintenance. When we looked at the actual, whoops, design for the site, this was a process. There were several iterations of the site, as Roger mentioned earlier. We looked at reuse of existing buildings. We looked at reconfiguration. We looked at what the site amenities should be. We looked at the public space and open space, and we looked at the functionality of each one of the different uses on the building. This came through council meetings and council decisions, town hall meetings, and work sessions. The final result is the site plan that you see here tonight, with the City Hall to the west of the property, located along Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street, the parking structure in the center of the property, and the fire station to the east, preserving much of the green space that currently exists along Newport Boulevard, in particular, the two large landmark ficus trees that dominate the site currently. The fire station property is really designed for optimum functionality of the fire station, according to Chief Riley, with perpendicular access to 32nd Street. We have a single point of vehicular entry along 32nd Street into the parking structure, and then a well-defined civic green space in between the parking structure and the City Hall building. We also looked in a little bit more detail on how to create that sense of civic presence along Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street, and started to look schematically at the design of a civic plaza, which would be a focal point for the project on that corner of 32nd Street and Newport Boulevard. When we look at the floor plans, I won't get into a lot of detail. We've really looked at these in quite a lot of detail in some of the past meetings. But the floor plans were really designed around the function of the building, with the lobby space being accessed from both the east and west orientations, so both from Newport Boulevard, as well as from the parking structure. The one-stop shop really became sort of the focal piece of that development of the floor plans, in that all the building departments needed to function around that one-stop shop to make, to facilitate city business. We also looked at potential growth within the proposed space plan. We have about a 20% expansion capability within the existing footprint. That equates to about 44 individuals. We do a lot of corporate design, and that's a pretty good number to work with. We usually work with about a 15% to 20% expansion capability, and you're right in where it should be. So this is a design which accommodates the present and the future needs of the community. We looked in more detail, of course, with the public spaces, being the council chambers, the community room, and the lobby and gallery and event space. You saw the previous iteration there. It flipped back and forth and several times. We wound up settling with this particular layout of the public areas, which gave us an increased lobby and events place, which actually has the ability to seat 114 people in a dinner-type situation, so it could be used for dinner-type events. We have a central receptionist that's directly in front as you enter the City Hall from the parking structure. We also have direct entries from the lobby and gallery space into the council chambers and the community room. We have direct entries and exits from the community room, as well as the council chambers to the exterior public spaces. And we have a nice shared environment between the community room and the council chambers, where they're sharing kitchen facilities, conference, and restrooms. When we look at the parking structure, again, a very simple structure, a simple split ramp structure. It's four levels above grade, which puts it at about 35 feet, which is actually slightly less than the height of City Hall. We have our main entry off of 32nd Street, but what we've done is we've drawn the actual gated entry back into the structure so that we have a queuing length of about five to six vehicles before you actually hit that gate. So it takes that queuing off of 32nd Street. We also have a direct entry with our main stair and elevator, which leads you directly into the City Hall itself. We also have a stair entry into the Vialito Plaza to the north, and also to 32nd Street to the south. We're looking at doing a very simple, very straightforward, very utilitarian design for the parking structure, and then using large-scale screened murals, which will start to adorn the outside edges of the structure. These can be done with photographs, with artistic pieces. They can be changed rather inexpensively. They're a great way, really, to add a lot of impact to the architecture. Fire station, again, was really based on function. The apparatus bay has been expanded by one from what you currently have. We have all of our public spaces to the, or, excuse me, all of our internal spaces to the west. We have our main public entry off of 32nd Street. The really great thing about the way the fire station lays out is the drive area, which takes you to the back of the fire station. The reason for that is it allows the chief to line up his vehicles after an emergency in front of the gate, so he's not lining up on 32nd Street. And that area is able to wash and prep the vehicles before they actually enter the apparatus base. We also have onsite parking. We have a large area in the back which is secured for that onsite parking. It's also for drills and things that the chief likes to do. The really wonderful thing about this, it all takes place on the other side of the parking structure, so it really goes unnoticed from, by City Hall itself. We have the perpendicular alignment to 32nd Street, which is ideal for operations for the fire station. So again, it's a very simple, very functional building. The aesthetic, we really did a lot of research when it came to the actual aesthetic of the building. We started out with the concept that the form of the building would follow the function of the building, and it's really laid out that way, and it's still, the design still manifests itself in that way. Sustainability became a driving force in the aesthetics of the design. The openings, the material, how we handle the sun protection, and the overall building configuration itself, all lends itself to a sustainable design approach. The idea of Newport Beach, a building that reflects the uniqueness of Newport Beach, a building that could be built in no other place but Newport Beach. And of course, the idea of a responsible budget. We also looked at architectural history throughout Newport Beach. We were never given a specific design theme, so we really wanted to explore what the possible themes could be. We looked at architects that shaped Newport Beach, or that were shaped by Newport Beach, and two floated to the top in the names of William Pereira and Schindler. Pereira, as you know, developed a lot of the original structures around Newport Center, as well as the design for Newport Center. Schindler designed the Lavelle Beach House, which is internationally recognized as a significant piece of architecture. One of the one comments that we were given in the very early phases of the design by Homer was that functionality in terms of serving the public will be the overriding theme of the design. Both of these architects really lend themselves to that statement, in that you see expressed very simple structures. You see a very intimate relationship between the indoor and outdoor spaces. We also looked deeper into the history of Newport Beach, specifically this area, and looked at some of the structures that are here that are considered historic, such as the pavilion structures. We also looked at structures that no longer exist, such as the original Peninsula Fire Station, which you see here. When Newport Beach originally started, the structures were very utilitarian, so this really started to play into the design of the City Hall. We also looked at the different styles throughout the area, specifically the peninsula and the surrounding areas on the peninsula. It's been suggested that perhaps the building should be Spanish Mediterranean. We did look at that. There actually isn't a lot of that in your history. Specifically, one building that came to the surface was Newport Harbor High School, which we're currently doing the renovation, restoration, and modernization of. That building, when we actually found the original drawings, the architect considered that to be more of a Moroccan influence than Spanish Mediterranean, if you can believe that. You could actually see that in a lot of the arch forms. There is a lot of that influence as well around the Balboa Pavilion. You do see a lot of Moroccan influence with the Spanish Mediterranean, which is very interesting. We looked at the exact context surrounding the building, directly surrounding the building. Buildings like the cannery, again, a very simple utilitarian structure, but in that sense, it's very beautiful. We looked at newer buildings around the site, such as the cannery lofts, the retail and office building directly across 32nd Street. Again, very simple, very elegant, very graceful structures. We also looked at forms which define the context of Newport Beach: water, boating, the piers. We also looked at public functions, such as the Newport Beach Film Festival. How could we be better neighbors to that with the design of the building and the open space and public spaces of the City Hall and Civic Center? So we took elements like the piers, the sails, the idea of the wildlife, the bowsprit of the boat, and the water, to all come together to start to form a very unique expression to the architecture that defines City Hall. So here you have the view from Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street, and you really start to see here a building that is defined by its environment. It's defined by the sails that allow natural light into the spaces below. It's defined by the form here, which is an abstraction of the bowsprit. It's defined by the public nature of the building and development of that public plaza and that sense of civic place with the courtyard, or, excuse me, the plaza on the corner of 32nd Street and Newport Boulevard, the civic expression of the city seal, the flag elements, the signage element. Again, the whole idea of the environmental nature of the building, and you start to see the operable windows, the natural materials, all coming together, again, to form an architecture that's defined by the environment that it's in. When we look from Newport Boulevard and Findlay, a very different expression of the building. This really is the gateway to the peninsula. We've discussed bringing in artists such as Tom Van Sant, who was inspirational in creating a lot of the artwork that you see around Newport Beach, such as the concrete impressions you see at Hoag Hospital, the Pelican Wall along Pacific Coast Highway. We looked at perhaps using him as a designer to create a very graceful art piece that shall, that'll adorn the 250-foot curved sloping wall that becomes the gateway to that Newport Beach peninsula. You see that wall, which is an abstraction of the water, with the sail elements, which will be translucent and internally illuminated in the evening. Then when we look from the 32nd Street elevation, or, excuse me, perspective, we start to see a very different side to the Civic Center complex. This really becomes all about that courtyard space and how we could better define that space. The building's become very simple along 32nd Street, and it really becomes all about how to animate and activate that public environment. The detailing, the lighting, all of that comes into play with the whole nautical nature of the environment and the city that it's, that the building is located. The fire station and parking structure also play into the same aesthetic, with the same color palette, the same material palette, the same layering of masses, so that this whole project starts to read as a Civic Center complex. And of course, the murals that will adorn the parking structure really start to tie it directly to the community. As far as the environmental considerations, just to reiterate again, LPA is probably the leading firm in the state for sustainable design. We've created more LEED-certified projects than any other firm. We have 39 LEED-accredited professionals. We design the largest gold-certified LEED project in the country, and we are recognized leaders in sustainable design. As a matter of fact, I just got back from the USGBC Green Build Conference, where I spoke about greening public buildings.
Rick, where is that project located?
Which?
The largest gold certified-
Oh, it's in Torrance. It's for the Toyota Motor Corporation.
Okay.
We actually utilized our own internal software to start to track the green nature of the Newport Beach City Hall throughout the entire process. This was something we brought on very early in the process, which really helped us to start to make some design decisions. The LEED system works with a series of credits, and based on that, we actually, and I won't go, we went all through that in a particular meeting, so I won't go into all that detail. But based on those credits, we actually have 31, which gives us Base Certification. Base Certification is 26 and more credits. Silver is 33 to 38, gold 39 to 51, and platinum 51 and above. So you can see, we're very, very close to silver certification. We did this through the use of natural daylighting, stormwater management, ventilation effectiveness, indoor air quality, reduction of heat islands, light pollution, alternative transportation, water use reduction, energy performance, ozone protection, construction waste management, recycled products and materials, local manufacturing and harvesting, community education, and green housekeeping. With only two points away from silver, we really wanted to see what it would take to get the building to be a LEED-silver-certified building. We started looking at potential credits, which would be a little bit more effort, a little bit more cost, but well worth it in the end. And we actually have a potential of 40 LEED credits, which would get us to gold. A couple of the options we were looking at was renewable energy, onsite renewable energy in the form of photovoltaic panels, which could be very simply installed on the top of the parking structure for optimum performance. We also looked at water efficiency through introducing a gray water irrigation system. The great thing about both of these components is that they become very visible, very identifiable. They could become real icons for the community and real educational tools for the community as well. If indeed this project does go forward in the design that is currently proposed, it would be the first LEED-certified City Hall in the United States. There's currently only one other City Hall certified, and that's in Canada. If it does get silver or gold, it would be the only silver or gold-certified City Hall in the world. So we're very proud- So we're very proud of that.
Thank you, Rick. This is the schematic design budget estimate. Simply put, this estimate, if it's on the drawings, it's in the budget. We have included every single element that you have seen here this evening in detail. We have also taken into account the effects of Hurricanes Katrina, Rita, some of the other natural disasters that we've had that have had a major impact on construction costs. We also projected the construction cost at a schematic cost level basis assuming a June of 2006 construction start. So these numbers represent the same level of estimate as do the documents which is schematic level, as Homer mentioned, 20 percent, which is the current phase of services for which we have been asked to perform. Okay, these are the direct costs. On a direct cost basis, demolition, clearing and grading, onsite improvements, utilities allowance, onsite improvements, excuse me, fire station, parking structure, and the City Hall with the community room and the council chambers. I might give you some square footage numbers. First of all, Rick did not point this out, but there's approximately two acres of open space in a five-acre site, or 40 percent of your site is open space, whether landscaped or hardscape, hardscape meaning a hardscape surface. The budget for the onsite improvements is $20 a square foot, okay? Originally, we were at about 12. At the insistence of one of the council members on the building committee, we elevated that number to $20 a square foot in order to allow flexibility in the design if the project advanced to subsequent phases. As a point of comparison, the fire station is $395 a square foot. This is designed to what we call Newport Beach standards. You may or may not recall, but LPA prepared all of the OCFA standards that they use throughout the county. The original budget estimates anticipate an OCFA design. This project is totally built with non-flammable materials. It's built with masonry. It's built with steel truss. It's got special kinds of doors. So a project, a similar project bid about a year ago for OCFA cost about $330 a foot and this is at $395 in June of 2006 with the added components. Those were also all presented in prior council presentations on a detailed basis. Parking structure is $5,909,000. That works out to $16,900 a stall for 350 stalls. The City Hall, the community room, and the council chambers is $325 a square foot. I believe many of you toured the Ranch of Santa Margarita project. That project was built approximately, well, it opened December of 2004, we did it, and that project was at $310 a square foot. So that's a historic cost and quite comparable. The FFNE, these are allowances. These are based upon experience we have in many, many other cities with city halls. We have a $22 per square foot FFNE allowance. FFNE stands for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And we also have a $10 allowance for the fire station for FFNE. These are standard numbers. These are Chevrolet, not Cadillac. Then there are indirect costs. You can see the components that make up the aggregate indirect costs as a function of total project costs, and this also includes project contingency. It's 21 percent. Earlier budget estimates we presented were in the range of 25 percent, so that number has come down as a percentage. I didn't know it did that. All right, total schematic design budget, $47,982,86. This is fairly comparable and has been holding relatively consistent to the, to the numbers we've presented all through, out the, this exercise. Okay, how can you find out more? For those of you at home who have been following or have not been following and would like to do so now, if you go to the City Hall website, you will find Town Hall Presentations 1 through 4. The Town Hall Presentations were publicly noticed. They were conducted, three of them were done on a Saturday, one was done on a Monday. They lasted several hours in length each time and they outreach to any and all members of the community. I think our largest attendance was slightly less than 90 people. And after that, it dropped down to about 40. And some sessions had as little as, I think, 12 or 13. The space utilization assessment is also on file. This is a document that was generated a few years ago to determine the actual space needs, requirements of the city based not only on how the city manages itself but on other projections used to comparable data and benchmarking from both the public sector and the private sector. Needs assessment, that's, that is basically a further enhancement of the program. Space requirement draft, that is the program. White paper response to council inquiry. There was a series of questions asked at one time by prior members of the council and some of the current members of the council. We then prepared a, what they call a white paper response. That is on the website. Also, you'll find the August 9th council presentation, the August 23rd council presentation, the September 27th council presentation, the October 11th council presentation, the October 25th council presentation, and in a few days, the presentation made this evening will also be available. And I understand Homer's always ready, willing, and able to field any calls at any time from anybody. That concludes our presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve.
Roger, before you go, question? Is that $47,980, is that the guaranteed number, assuming we're willing to go forward?
It would be, but we weren't asked to prepare that. We were asked to prepare a schematic level budget estimate. But if you guys vote to go forward this evening, that's a good number.
Thank you.
If you vote to go forward.
All right, let's, before we move on to other questions, any other council questions for the design team?
Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
Just, what level did you go on your floor plans and things like that or design? Has that been developed to the point of layouts and so forth or?
Absolutely. It's in very great detail.
So this, is this bidable at this point or?
No, because what you have is a schematic design. You have outlined specifications. You could not bid this project. If you were going to bid this project according to Public Contracting Code, which is how we would have bid it or would bid it, you'd have to take this project through complete working drawings. Think of architecture as 100 percent.
Well, I, I understand.
We're at 20 percent.
So then, to get those working drawings, there's a fee for that and a time period, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, could you give me some idea of that?
Well, we hadn't been asked to prepare that. If that's the direction of council, then we will prepare that and present it to council or to Homer or whomever. But we had been asked to go to this level and to stop. That was the direction of building committee. That's what we've done.
Okay.
Okay, Homer, let's talk about what's not in this number. We're talking about a project. We can't, we can't speak of this in isolation. What, what isn't included in what you need to, if you're, as a city manager, to have a new City Hall ready to be used by, by your staff and our residents?
If the construction took place on the existing site, the relocation cost is not in here because that is a cost that would be project cost charged as a part of the construction. There is FFNE there, so I think the relocation cost and certainly then the financing package and the financing cost is something that is covered in the staff report and again, was not a part of the responsibility of Mr. Torero.
No, I, I understand, but it would be part of our discussion tonight. If we were to go forward, we couldn't look at a $48 million number and not know what the total cost was of the project. Yes, Mr. Torero?
That's a very good question, Mayor Heffernan, and we had anticipated that. So we did in fact prepare this sort of spreadsheet. This is based on our experience in other cities. We put everything on this list that we could think of. I'll go through it quickly. The interim relocation cost allowance is a $2 million number. There has been discussion about using temporary facilities or tensile structures on existing city property which I believe would be substantially less than that number. If you recall, Mr. Danner's presentation on finance, he carried a $2 million number in his overall financing strategies. The city would have to post all risk insurance allowance. That's called your builder's risk or owner's risk. For those of you who are developers on the council or in the audience, you're fully aware of that. Development fees and assessments, usually most cities waive that number, but we include it as a line item. If you chose to assess yourself, I guess you could. The same with plan check fees, permits, and inspections. Dry utility fees allowance, you'll pay some dry utility hookups to the utility companies. Natural gas connection fees, sewer and water connection fees. Environmental remediation. I'm very pleased to tell you that we did extensive exhaustive environmental remediation, not environmental remediation, environmental testing on this building. These buildings are clean. They have only one instance of asbestos. It's very minor. The tank has been removed. We are literally finishing the final closure on the tank with the county and the powers that be. This site surprised me. It was very, very clean. So I think your remediation would be a few thousand dollars at best. Artwork and plants, I don't know, you know, I mean, that I think is subjective. Phone system, hardware, and handsets, you do have those if you chose to purchase new ones or lease new ones, that would be a cost. Some cities do, some don't. Same thing with the office equipment, computers, fax machines, et cetera. Any costs associated with the land swap, I'm assuming there would be some legal costs although if your attorney handles it, if Ms. Clausen's office handles it, I don't think there'd be a cost to that. There was some survey work done. It was a few thousand dollars just to redraw lot lines. Coastal Commission approvals, I believe, I know that Ms. Temple's here, but I believe that some time ago you did file with the Coastal Commission for coastal development permit. We did provide all the information and I think that is in process. That's something you might want to consider if you elect to put this project on hold. Environmental impact reports, none were required. Traffic studies were done. Cost of funds, that's the interest and that's, that's what you're going to pay whenever you borrow money. At the rate we're going, I'm assuming that number's going to go up over time in any city contingency, although frankly, under our scenario, we don't, we don't require city contingencies. You shouldn't have one. So the numbers we could identify as legitimate costs is about $2,400,000. And I think that if you did a wrap or a participation with, with other sort of group insurance policies, you might be able to dramatically lower that number. But staff asks us for an estimate, that's an estimate. So those are all the categories I can think of. There may be more, but I haven't seen them anywhere and this is, this is sort of your checklist. So we did in fact give that some consideration and.
Okay, and can I ask that, your number of 40, $48 million not only includes construction costs but the cost to complete, complete the drawings and everything else?
It's, it's.
It's an all-in number?
Yes, or it's handing you the keys.
It's an all-in number from your 20 percent schematics to the keys?
Yes.
Drawings to, to building it?
Drawings to occupancy.
Good, thank you.
Just for clarification, there's three numbers up there, $2,250,000. That doesn't add up to the $2,400,000, so is the, is $150,000 a little fudge there or is that just a mistake on the?
I think it's a mistake.
Okay. Isn't that the tours for the city councilman to go to other city, city halls in Europe?
In France?
Kind of like the city of Irvine?
Yes, when you'll be joining the Great Park Board on their soirees and junketeers, yes.
I like to go to Africa.
All right. Homer, are we going to deal with this component now or are we going to deal with the other component, the financing costs? I mean, the all-in number here?
Well, I think it really depends upon the city council if you want the members of the building committee or do you want, or if you want me to just highlight the recommendations.
No, no, here's, here's my specific question. We have a $48 million number, we have a $2.4 million number, and then we have a financing cost number. You just don't back up the truck and get the cash. So there's a load to do that and it'd be nice to know what that number is.
Okay, I can review that for you then. As far as anybody who has a copy of the staff report, it is the next page after staff report done by myself which is numbered page three, so it's the following page and it assumes a $48 million project fund. And the estimates from our finance advisor is in order to get 48 million for the City Hall and Civic Center project, that would require us to borrow $52.5 million. That $52.5 million would be broken down for $48 million for the project. There would be a debt service reserve fund of $3.38 million. Cost of issuance, $278,000. Underwriters discount, $367.700. Bond insurance, a little over half a million dollars. So the delivery expenses as far as selling COPs would be about $1.15 million. And that adds up to roughly $52.4 million in order to receive $48 million to apply towards the project. So the big differential there is that when you sell COPs or any kind of bonds, there's a debt reserve fund that is required of the bondholders and that would be $3.38 million.
Okay, so if we take $52,600,000 and say you had $2.4 million for what was on the board, that rounds it up to $55 million, is my math right? Just so we have our numbers that we can start with.
Yes, that'd be very, very close.
Is there any agreement on this, just a general number? Not that we have to agree on it, okay.
And this is based upon selling COPs basically in this current market today.
And that assumes an interest rate of?
It assumes an interest rate of approximately 4.94 percent which would be on the following page, the right-hand side. So that is up from 4.7 percent that was estimated by our financial advisor when we started this process starting in June, which is roughly $100,000 differential per year.
Okay. Mr. Nichols?
It seems to have a floating rate, Homer, on the one table I looked at. Went from 3.8 to 4.9 percent. Does that have a floating rate?
Well, remember, there would be COPs that would come due different times. There would be some short-term issuance and long-term issuance too with little different interest rates depending upon the time of maturity, so it's roughly what the average is.
No, it's, it's not a floating rate. It's just that the shorter-term bonds have a lower rate.
Yes.
And as you go out for a longer term, the rate goes up. I guess that's what it is. It's like buying a CD. All right. All right. Any council questions about this before we open up to the public?
Are we going to talk about these committees that we're talking about forming first or?
Should we go to the, you want to go to the building committee recommendation next, Homer?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be good for people who might be watching in who don't have a copy of the staff report just to roughly summarize what the building committee's report says and what the recommendations are so that people would have a little context in which you are going to be discussing the issue.
Okay, who's going to give that? Mr. Ridgeway, the chairman of the committee, or Mr. Bloudow, city manager?
I would suggest Mr. Bloudow and then I'll give my, my minority report because I did not agree with the recommendation. It was a two to one vote and I still would like to have my opportunity to make my comment.
Okay, so let's start, tell the public who was on the committee. Selich, Mr. Webb, and Mr. Ridgeway.
That's right.
Okay, you can give their recommendation.
And prior to that, Councilman Heffernan was on for several months and also Ex-Mayor Bromberg was on for a couple of years. So the committee was formed in 2003, met numerous times, but started meeting on a monthly basis this past May when things really started heating up and we started doing the public outreach and LPA really got involved in the design and also the floor plan and, and site plan. So there were a number of issues, the staff, not staff report, but the committee report says, came to the city council over the last three years. Basically, what the committee feels like the basic issues before the city council are, are as follows. Does the council want to proceed with the preparation of the final design and building specifications for the project? And if you do, what is the council's preferred method to deliver the project? We had a council item on that about a month ago and that was design build, design bid build. Or also if it was legal, the program manager at risk, delivery method. Another question, if the council wants to proceed, does the city council want to direct staff to prepare the documents for the sale of COPs and the amount sufficient to fund the Civic Center project? And we said that was about $52.5 million. And if the council wants to proceed, does it want to direct the relocation specialist, CB Richard Ellis, to enter into lease negotiations for a temporary City Hall site? There's some other, plenty of other options for the city council to consider. One would be, does the city council want to abandon further efforts regarding a new Civic Center project? Another is, does the city council want to add some additional process to the already existing Civic Center planning process in an attempt to build greater community consensus? Or another option is, does the city council want to do the additional process to build community consensus and at the same time, enter into a contract? And I was corrected, it would be with Mr. Tori. And I was corrected, it would be with Mr. Tori Arrow for LPA Architects to complete the plans and specifications for the civic center project. The building committee report says that it thinks that through the process, especially in the last six months, a lot of progress has been made. There's a good site plan, and probably the most important is that there seems to be a wide recognition on part of many members of the community that a new city hall is needed. However, there are a couple of major issues that it does not seem like there is very strong community consensus regarding. One is, is this the appropriate location for the city hall facility? And two, how does putting $48 million into a civic center project, how does that relate to the other major facility needs the city is going to have over the next 10 to 15 years? There really isn't a good, I think, public understanding of the answers to those questions. The committee says that the recommendation, two-to-one, is that the city council should make a good-faith attempt to better involve the community in dealing with these basic issues and in answering them to the satisfaction of most of the community. So the recommendations were to, one, to accept the Griffin Structures Design Development Contract as being fulfilled. Two, to form a city hall site review committee composed of, from seven to 10 residents and two city council ad hoc members, in order to identify and assess potential sites anywhere in the community for a city hall, to meet and do that assessment, and then submit a written report to the city council in an oral presentation with the recommendations for what would be the best site or sites. Another recommendation is to form a second committee, which would be called Facilities Finance Review Committee, again, composed from seven to 10 residents and two ad hoc city council members, to review the 15-year facility needs that the city has, and to make recommendations back to the city council as to how the city can best afford in order to meet these public facility requirements. Lastly, the building committee recommends that these committees be advertised and appointments be made at the January 10th meeting, with the intent that the committees report back their findings no later than June 15th of 2006. The committee does recognize that this would require a great deal of staff support, but feels like these issues are of such importance, when there is strong recognition that a new city hall is needed, that that should become a staff priority. So in conclusion, if I could just read the last couple of sentences, because I think it sums up the committee's report. In conclusion, the building committee believes the process leading to making the decisions necessary to build a new city hall should be expanded to become more community-oriented. If that occurs, we believe this additional process will result in a strong consensus to move forward and make the new city hall a reality that the community will not only support, but be proud of. That concludes the summarization of the committee's report and recommendations.
Mr. Ridgeway, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Chairman of that.
I will actually start with the conclusion, which I did not agree with. I would remind everybody up here in the city in general that there was a process put in place when, at the beginning of 2004, and that process was to, one, have site visits and tours of city hall, and have Roger Tori Arrow and Griffin Properties review with the community at large in public hearings here at city hall on Saturdays, and then I think one was on a Monday. And as Mr. Tori Arrow stated, there were about, the most was 90 people, and the least was maybe 12 or 13. What I find interesting in the conclusion by, again, the two-to-one vote, I don't know how an additional process will result in strong consensus. As the mayor stated earlier, there's only 15 people here tonight, and I don't know how many are opposed, and I don't know how many are for, but I think there is either a significant apathy, or there is a significant silent support for this project. I'd like to think of it as the latter, because I have talked to numerous citizens, and at least the ones I talked to, and now with the new project and the new building, with the detail that was put in it, there is a greater acceptance and understanding of the project. There is quite a bit of misinformation. Let me talk about the, I guess there is some discussion about an alternate location, but in all the meetings that were held, alternate locations were discussed, but at the end, as Mr. DiAmato stated tonight, this is a historical site. It's where city hall has had a presence since 1889, or some civic government. We were obviously incorporated in 1906. If you go to the geographical center of this city, which you, of course, can do, you perhaps end up in Newport Center. The geopolitical center might be the Dunes, which is interesting. And I would remind everybody who is listening that there has been discussion to move Washington, DC to Kansas. You know, I don't, quite candidly, I don't get it. But, and it's kind of like, I don't get moving this city hall, to be honest with you. It has been here for years, and there actually are four districts on this side of the bay. And if it moves over to the other side of the bay, then the representatives who are on this side of the bay clearly will, and the citizens, will be, will not agree to move it over there. We're going to have this ping-pong ball going back and forth. I think that this site, again, if we go to the political reality that occurs in this city, I had lunch with a mayor a couple of weeks ago. That mayor suggested, well, gee, we should move city hall, and then we can make the city hall site a park. Well, that is a $25 million folly, probably. There is no value, there is no economic value to a park, number one. And clearly, if we did put a rezoning on this property, it would have to go to a green light vote. Also, a site over in Fashion Island would have to go to a green light vote. Greenlight feels it's their bounden duty to stop everything. So far, that's been my experience. And even in their redraft of their new document, they are in opposition, or they are supporting a few projects, but city hall is not one of them, and obviously rezoning of the city hall site is not one of them. It makes sense, and I guess, I listen, I've been on this committee, I have been the chairman from the day one, and it is, and we got to a project that is very utilitarian, it's very economical in the overall scheme of things. I think we did a disservice by allowing a photo to go out somewhat earlier, but now we have a very detailed, and I think a very classy, building. The Perrara Buildings and the Schindler Buildings, I think it's Rudolph, by the way, is basically post and beam. We have a very few post and beam construction around here. I want to say that the new city hall project is not post and beam. It is really much more ageless. I think it will endure, first of all, you can't even see this building. I mean, I think it will be heavily landscaped, but it has a lot of pedestrian components to it. It has obviously adequate parking for all of those who have come down here, and I think it will age very well. It also has a LEED certification to it, and as stated earlier by the architect, we would be the first in the United States with that. We could certainly be, in fact, I think we'd be the only one, if I remember, certainly at the gold standard. The committee, quite candidly, Mr. Heffernan was on the older committee. We put in, I would say, hundreds of hours on this project. And I will tell you, LPA and Griffin has put in thousands of hours, and I'm very proud of the project that's here before us. I don't know if I'm just, I drove three hours to be here tonight, because if I'm going to lose, I want to be here. But I think this is a terribly wonderful project for this city. It is a city hall that is needed for all the reasons stated, ADA, mechanical, parking, the seismic. I don't think there's any disagreement by anybody that we shouldn't have a new city hall. And we had a meeting on whether we could afford it, and obviously, we can. And will any projects suffer in the future? I think city hall, a new city hall, is a given. By the way, the hard construction cost for just the building is $23.5 million. That's a very doable number. But we can afford it, and we have on the horizon projects that you all know about that will be generating income to the city. Obviously, a new Lexus dealership, the new resort down in, the 200-room resort down in the coast, just those two. And then the hotel business, every, all the hotels have remodeled. I think we're looking at substantial monies coming into our general fund to continue with our CIP projects without any impairment. This project, the COPs, will cost us a little over $3 million a year. The projects I just mentioned will probably generate significantly more dollars than the $3 million that we're going to pay for on this city hall project. We own the land, and we need the project. And we could go on with this argument forever and a day. I think the time is now. I think the employees deserve a better place, a safer place. I think the citizens deserve the building that's been designed. It will only get better through additional design. There is more detail to be done, but there is significant detail in the schematic drawings that have been presented. But the materials that have been chosen, the thought and the artistic background and the metaphoric design work that has been done on this is a gift to this city. No, it's not Moroccan. No, it's not craftsman. I'm happy to say it isn't. It's just a government building that has a lot going on, that will endure for a long time, and it's, I think it's appropriately at this location. I'm sorry, I had the same discussion with my committee members. I think, my opinion is, we should approve the project tonight, number one. We should also, we talked about, we had a hiccup at this council meeting on how we move forward with construction. The committee, I think, at least without a vote, probably would recommend that we go into a full design, go 100% drawings, and bid it, and thereby avoid any of the conflict that we seem to have, or the turmoil we had on a GMAX contract with a given entity. So there is a lot more work to be done. But I think the threshold question before us tonight, the basic threshold before we get to the next step, is do we want to approve this city hall at this site? And I think the case has been made. As for those who get into the geology of the site or the hydrology of the site, I submit to you, this is the perfect site for the citizens. It's at a low point. If we had an emergency, it's a great site for people coming through here. It has high ground on it. It has a parking structure. There are many components about this that are not quite understood, and I want to tell you, my opinion is that the citizens, they don't really care to understand. They'd rather just look at the picture and say yea or nay. They don't want to get into the detail of the hydrology or the construction or the mechanics or the air conditioning. But it has a lot of components for everybody. And I'm going to just repeat. My vote was to move forward, as I've just proposed, and therein lies the difference in the report. It was two-to-one, and I'm hopeful that I can pull somebody with me tonight, because this thing has been beat up in location, in my opinion, unmercifully. We've talked about the tech center, 400,000 square feet, 1,000 car parking. It doesn't work. You'd have to tear down three buildings. Angelo Gordon is the owner. They have called me. They have no desire to tear down any buildings. I would just make that clear to anybody who cares to listen. If we go to Fashion Island, let's speak the unspeakable the Irvine Company wants. They want full market rate for any land, and it has to go to a green light vote. They probably would want, like they asked for tonight, transfer, maybe more transfer of their retail rights to more office. That's just part of negotiation in this town, and at least I'm going to put it on the table for everybody to listen to. I talked to probably 15 real estate guys in the last couple of weeks. They said, well, why don't you put it over here in Lido Marina Village, maybe where the Blue Dolphin Building is? That's an acre and a half. This is four, this is actually almost five acres? Almost five acres. We need a new fire station. We need parking. When you understand all the alternatives, which is, they're recommending, the other guy, the component, they've been, we all know intuitively that we're going to be back here in a few months, and those sites, everything I just said will be in a report. And so then what do we do? We own the piece of property here. And this property has no value until it's rezoned if we go another direction. No value, especially if it's parkland. I think that's a waste of the citizens of this community's time and effort. The citizens have spoken by not showing up. They want representative government. They want us to vote on it, and I submit to you, we should vote on it tonight.
Paul, are you... Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I think we have to open up the public, but I would make a motion to, at this point in time, I will make the motion to support my recommendation that we move forward, at least with phase one, and locate the property, and move forward with full working drawings, and go out to the market for a COP.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a second. Okay. We've got an action out of it for us. Okay. More discussion among the council members?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as being a part of the building committee, as we got to the project, I think that we have answered a number of the concerns that we had at the beginning. And I don't disagree with much of what Councilmember Ridgeway has said related to the process we've gone through, and the things that we have done to try to answer as many people's questions as we can. However, in my analysis of the process, one of the things that keeps coming back to us is the constant thought of moving this city hall to someplace else. One of the things we haven't done so far is to document a number of those possibilities, to try to review those, look at them, and either say they're a better opportunity than what we have here, or this site is the best opportunity. I think until we can put together that study, that report, that discussion, involve knowledgeable people in the real estate industry and development industry, and trying to put that together and assembling it, that we are always going to have a comment of, well, you didn't. I realize we can't, well, you didn't consider all the options. I realize that probably, no matter what we do, there will be a few people that will come up with an option that we didn't think of. That happens on almost every project I've been involved with. But I think that it's important, before we take this large step, to sit back, look at what we've got, and... what we've got, analyze it, go through it. At that same time, have the committee that we, has been proposed, look at options for other sites within the community. As far as I see it, if we're looking at other sites, I think that we need to look at ones that we could own. I think that we need to look at one that would, perhaps would be more geographically central. As we look at those sites, we may find that, hey, they aren't there. But at least, we've looked at it. We've put the information together. We've come back, and then we have a little bit better idea of where we're going. I think that the information that the architects and the Griffin Structures have put together have established very well the needs for the building, so that we know that we can fit with room for expansion into a 72,000-square-foot building, if I remember correctly. So that that's one of the things that our committee will have on their plate, that this is what we're doing. I'm not proposing that this committee will sit back and relook at reorganizing the city or the city hall occupants. This is something that we're, would be looking at from the standpoint of trying to make sure that we have covered all of the bases. Secondly, we, I think, need to have a better list of what our infrastructure needs are, the major infrastructure needs. Councilmember Ridgeway mentioned that. I feel that within the structure that the city has worked for the many, many years is we are very financially sound. We are probably as conservative as any city around as far as making sure that we can provide for the future. We have substantial reserves to handle almost any emergency or unknown that we can imagine. Our finance director has done a wonderful job as we have gone through the various different state takeaways of providing us with estimates at the beginning of a budget year, to where at the end of the budget year, we usually have been able to handle anything the state has done to us. And I think that we have been extremely prudent in our financial management, and that if we can, again, have another committee sit back, list what we think are the major infrastructure needs, come up with possibilities for financing those needs in the next 15 years, try to look at the city hall and as probably the single largest expenditure within that group, and how paying for a city hall with our certificates of participation at a little over $3 million a year will impact our ability to look at those, find, those other infrastructure improvements over the years. When we have that information, I think that I would feel a little bit more comfortable in voting to go forward. I definitely feel we need a city hall. So this is not a delaying tactic to try to postpone or get rid of a city hall project. I think that the two major questions that I keep hearing, and I'll admit, it is not from very many people, is the location issue, and can we afford improvements in the future if we go forward with this city hall? So that, that's why, at least I voted within the building subcommittee to recommend going forward. When we do go forward with the city hall, I agree with Councilmember Ridgeway, that we should look at completing plans and going out to bid the project in a normal manner. So I would offer a substitute motion that would be essentially the building committee's recommendations, which would accept the Griffin Structures Design Improvement Contract, form a city hall site review committee, form a city hall, I mean, a facilities finance review committee, and have people come forward to apply for these committees, which would be appointed on January 10th, and that our committee voted to get back no later than June 15th. If we were to assume that the committees would be up and running by the first of February, that would be February, March, April is three months. First of May would be three months. So this is really four and a half months to title this, and that's probably, should be able to accomplish that. So that's my motion.
I'll second that. All right. Speaker Click, we have two motions outstanding. What's our next?
Public comments.
Well, no, okay, we have two motions. We'll have them sit for the moment. Any other city council input on this?
I'll, I'll raise my comments until after public comments.
Okay. Anybody, anything at that end? Mr. Nichols?
Just make a comment. We've had some indication from people who have knowledge that there are problems, particularly with location. I brought up some earlier myself. I would point out that we have a traffic problem to get here, and one of that's due to our own concerns, and, or lack of concern, and that is with Newport Boulevard, where it becomes a 55. We have a terrible traffic jam up there. We really need to do something to get the traffic through there. That's our main artery to get traffic in and out of city hall. We also have problems going west, in that we have filled up traffic lanes a lot of the time, going toward Huntington Beach. And going east, it's a real bottleneck. So when you go through, beyond Mariners Mile, from Mariners Mile to Dover, that is definitely a real traffic. And then Corona del Mar is also a traffic problem. If you were to look at Fashion Island, one site that has been talked about is above the library on Avocado. We own that site. That's the first thing. It has a six-lane road running by it, Avocado Boulevard. That runs into multiple streets going north out of there, MacArthur, Jamboree, San Joaquin Hills Road. When you're going to the east and west, you have, of course, Coast Highway, San Joaquin Hills Road again. To the east, and Coast Highway is the biggest going to the west that we have anywhere. So there is, you can certainly get to it a lot easier and get away from it a lot easier. The site is larger. We would not have the fire station on the site. We already have the fire station in city hall in Fashion Island. The library didn't work out very well above city hall. Maybe we learned something there. It didn't get enough traffic. So its present location, it's doing very much better. It needs a little more parking. The present site that we're talking about, a park above that, the park is not a park in the normal sense. It should be. It's 500 yards across. It's more than that long. It certainly would be very easily developed as a city hall and still have plenty of room on it. I believe that those are, those are two main reasons why I think that some of this deserves looking into. When you look at the hazards down here, we're not very far from the Newport Englewood Fault, which runs down roughly Valboa Boulevard. So you're talking about five blocks, four blocks from Newport Englewood Fault. The importance of that is that, for example, the whole hospital wing was put on rollers so that it could accommodate the fault. What would happen in this area is probably liquefaction. This is, this is a pretty good site for that from everything I've seen. It certainly would be, it's in the 40-foot level that the fires, fire department has said that a tsunami would reach. So that kind of a hazard is also here. So I, as a site to build a new city hall, there are some problems in that, that have been identified by the city. I believe that we do need to look at these things, and we need to answer those questions. Now, I'm certainly for the alternative motion up here, and I think that it would be very good to proceed. I am not against a new city hall. Certainly, if you look at this, it was designed, when we needed something, we built it. When we needed the next thing, we built it. And we built a specialty item for each subject matter we needed. When we had an older building left, we really didn't remodel it. We just got what was left. So where we had a police station, we now have, a jail is serving as our place where we do our printing. Certainly, a modern office structure would improve that. Is this the only one? I don't know. I think we should certainly look, and we have others that we can look at. We would save the cost of relocation, and that's a sizable cost in itself. So that's another aspect of it. But this is, this is my opinion. This is an area that I thought we should look at. I do feel that we're pretty crowded on this site. I tried to improve things by the design of the fire station. I think you would still see, if you looked at the design now, you could come in off that back road into the fire station through it and out, and it would work very well, and be able to move over the parking structure a little bit. But these kinds of things, we still could look at here, but I, but I do believe we need to consider these larger questions as well. So I will be voting for the alternative motion. Thank you.
Any other comment here? I have a question for Mr. Torero. Mr. Torero, given the two motions that are here, you gave us a fixed price if we start construction June '06. Say that's delayed six months. What happens to your number in this construction cost environment? If you can give us one. Does it go, does it stay the same? Does it go down? Does it go up? And how much?
Well, I guess my question is, is it six months from June? So now it's December?
Yes, I mean, you said, you said your price is good if you're on a start date in June, and say it's a start date a year from now.
Well, I think we take a look at where things are at that time.
You think it'll go down? Are we better off waiting?
Well, I don't think, I don't think construction costs are going down. I don't think material costs are going down. I don't think that interest rates are going down, since everybody seems to have crystal balls and has all these. Several people have come to me and told me that construction costs will be going up. Several people have come to me and told me that interest rates will be going up. So I think they're probably going to go up on both counts.
All right, well, then, let's make it simple.
Yeah.
Let's just go, if you start a project in January of '05 versus starting one in two weeks in December, what have costs done in 2005, construction costs?
Construction costs have, including Rita and everything else, have gone up between 20 and 25 percent.
All right.
I'll give you one simple example.
No, that's all right.
Plywood's gone from 15, $25 a sheet. Just one example.
Okay, and what did they go up, if you can have an estimate, what they'd go up in 2004 on a calendar-year basis? Did they stay the same?
I'm sorry?
In 2004, what did they do? On a year, on a calendar-year basis?
Construction costs have gone up over the last, probably the last three years, have gone up 15 to 20 percent a year.
Per calendar year?
Yes, sir.
No, that's it. That's what we need to know. Okay, we'll throw that in the hopper, too.
In fact, there was an article in today's, in one of the newspapers. Several developers who've been considering high-rise projects in the Anaheim area have decided to pull back because of construction costs. You may have followed some of the high-rise projects in Las Vegas that have been taken off the market, the residential, because of the increase in construction costs. So what happens is that construction costs are beginning on an economic basis, on a yield return, as a developer are beginning to reach the point where their yields aren't there. So you're going to see that having an impact. That's definite indication where construction costs are.
But what you've said tonight is that that's not a city risk. If you start in June, your number's good.
Yeah.
That's it. That's all we need to know.
Okay.
It's good. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to cut off all this eternal talk, and I'm going to open up to the public. Okay, let's know first, before we unleash this, how many, how many intend to speak So we have 20 people, roughly. Okay? All right, it's 9:30. If we start this, it's going to be a long time. Do we take a break? Do we go? No, it's not your decision. It's our decision. Okay. City council, you ready to go? Or you want to take a break before we start this? This could be an hour and a half, nonstop.
Let's take a break.
We'll take a break at 10:00. Okay, we'll start the public comment. Who's first? Please identify yourself when you come up. No, I mean orally, so it's part of the record as well.
My name is Edward Lyon. The last time I spoke to the council was when they were trying to put a meandering boardwalk down the beach, and I was opposed to that. So I don't know how long ago that is, but I'm a 43-year resident of Newport Beach. I'm a sixth-generation Californian, and I basically lived my whole life here, as far back as I can remember. I am pleased that Don Webb brought up the story about Joe Beek, because it demonstrated, I think, the residents and the commercial interests wanting to work with the council to get something done. And that's what I'm here to represent, is that as a member of this community, I would like to represent the community, and hopefully, other members of the community can work with this council to get this thing done right. I mean, maybe a brand-new facility is needed, and I just think there needs to be more homework done to determine where, how much, and, you know, how it's going to work. I want to go back to your opening comment, Mr. Mayor, about this agenda item. I am disgusted with the residents of this city not being clamoring in this council to make their feelings known, because you just don't go spend $55 million without, I think, significant input from the people that will use the facility and, and will be represented by the facility. And I apologize for that, because I think there are a number of people, at least from my canvassing of my neighborhood, which is Newport Heights, that people have an opinion, but they're also very apathetic, and that they feel as if they say anything, it doesn't matter, because it's going to get done anyway. So I am very encouraged by the recommendation of the subcommittee that the formation of these two additional finance review and city hall site review will at least get some more residential or resident involvement. And I think the city should do its utmost to get qualified individuals from the city. I mean, we have CFOs from major building companies. We have architects. We have real estate brokers. We have all these assets out there in the community that I think you guys need to draw from to get, you know, a solid opinion about what should be done here. I, again, I wrote down so many notes. The other thing I just want to say is that I am a supporter of green light. I do not think it is intended to shut everything down. I think it is intended to keep this city in its, you know, the reason why we moved here 43 years ago, because it's a beautiful place to live, and it needs to be preserved. I happen to be married to one of Joe Beek's granddaughters, and my children would therefore be his great-grandchildren. And one thing that I don't want to do is burden my children and their grandchildren with debt until kingdom come, and which is why I am very interested to see how this $55 million is repaid, and how, and even if it's legal, that we borrow it. I also feel that, that the amount of money that it's going to take to service this debt, however many years, can be used for any one of numerous municipal projects that need to get done. And... And, again, growing up in Newport Beach, I've seen so much deterioration, the schools, the roads, I think there really needs to be focus on our quality of life. So in conclusion's regard, I recommend the council take actions, two and four in this agenda, I'm sorry, yeah, two, three, and four, and that I would look forward to submitting my resume for inclusion on any one of those committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. James Turner, 409 Bayside Drive. I've spoken a couple of times here recently on interest rates, and I certainly support the work that you've done in moving this project ahead. This is a terrific time, from an interest rate standpoint, to finance this type of project. We're not talking $55 million here, we all know this is to be a $110, $120, $130 million dollar project. The main thing here that I'm critical about is the location. This site is vulnerable. After all the calamities that we have witnessed this past year, I wonder what the historical value is of some of the property in New Orleans these days. So I urge us to look at other site locations, and I strongly support the comments of Councilman Webb and Councilman Nichols. Thanks a lot.
Beverly Johnson, I live at 703 and 1/2 Point Setta in Corona del Mar. And at the last Corona del Mar Residents Association meeting, we didn't actually take a vote, but we had a major discussion, and we were unanimous in agreeing that we all felt you needed a new city hall. And that was one of the things that you're to decide tonight, according to what Homer had said, so I wanted to tell you that, that we had unanimously, our board at our meeting, all agreed that you did need that. And then, from my own personal experience, as far as having someone, architects, with the background that they have, I think that any architect that you choose, and if that's, if you haven't actually chosen this company, that whoever it is, or even your construction people, need to be people who you don't have to reinvent the wheel with, because people who have had experience, as you all know, in anything you've ever done in your own home, or throughout your life, you find that people who have had experience in an area that you're, you're thinking of making some sort of improvements to, or changes to, you don't have to reinvent the wheel if you go with that firm. So hopefully, you will continue and choose someone who has been down that road in your construction, and also in your design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I was sitting here.
Let's have, let's have a name first, please.
What's that? Oh, sorry, Craig Rager, Newport Beach. Sorry, I apologize for that. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I heard some things that I think we should highlight on a little bit. As I look across the City Council members, I know some of you guys are either developers or builders, and I've done some building myself, and I've always had a full set of plans. I don't think there's any way you could proceed with any project without a full set of plans. I don't think it's, I also don't think there's any way to, to get a true cost estimate, unless you have a full set of plans. We paid Mr. Torero, I guess, $650,000, correct me if I'm wrong on that figure. It's a considerable sum of money, I think we should, we should have, you know, incorporated a set of plans into that, so we could have a, so we could have a true cost estimate. If you talk to any contractor, and you guys have all been down this road before, ask them what they love, number one, change orders. Change orders, cha-ching, that's, that's what that means to a contractor. So we have a 20 percent build-out or plans, you can't go to the city and get a building built with a 20 percent plan drawing, they're gonna, they're gonna want a full set of plans. Without a full set of plans, you can't, you can't foresee some of the special needs in some of the buildings. Let me give you just one, my, one, you know, one little example, and let you expand on it. This building, or this room we're in now, requires extra lighting, especially for city council members, so that they can, you know, be better viewed by home. That would be a change order. I, I could go through a 20 percent drawing like that, come up with change orders, that could just blow that $47 million dollar number just sky-high. Why didn't we get a full set of plans for the $650,000 we spent on this? And I, as, as a suggestion, you know, I'm not just gonna stand here and criticize City Council, my, my jobs also give us some suggestions. I think we should have gotten a full set of plans, and we should make a decision based on a full set of plans, so we know the exact cost of this.
I have a question for you. Have you seen a contract that addresses change orders?
Have I seen a contract that addresses change orders? Well, we probably don't have one for this project, do we, or do we?
You seem to have a clear path of how change orders are processed. It would usually be in accordance with the contract, so that's why I asked you if you had seen a contract.
In my experience, change orders are a license for abuse. Unless you have everything well-defined ahead of time, you're gonna run into unforeseen items, and how, we, we're not even to the point where we could get a change order in there, because we're only a 20 percent workup on this project. So you're, you know, you know, sorry, you know, I mean to step on you, but you're, you're ahead of where, where we should have, way ahead of where we should already be now.
Actually, I think you're way ahead, because there's, you don't have a contract that you're referencing.
Yeah, but we're, we're voting on a project on a number that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything, because we don't have a set of plans with, with itemized list and a, a true cost and a, you know, a build-out plan for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're next. You've got, three Thompson, here's your chance. Come on up, you're next.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, my name is Doug Dryer. We live at 519 Marigold, and have for the last 40 years. We own commercial property over on Vialito, so we're directly adjacent to the city hall project. I frankly am in favor of a new city hall. But I think to answer your comment, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Ridgway, of the apathy of the voters, you can't use the term voters anymore for the city of Newport Beach, they're citizens, because they are not allowed to vote on this project. If I understand correctly, and I think that's one area that the city might help, is explaining to the general population of Newport Beach, COP versus bond versus other forms of financing, because if I take a hundred-dollar bill out of this pocket, or out of this pocket, it doesn't make any difference, it's still money out. Whether the city can afford to pay for it, only you people know that. But I believe that the apathy, the fact this place isn't stuffed full of people, is that they don't have a vote on it. It's like, when I was a young boy, I went up to the mountains at Big Bear, and I started pushing a snowball. And I got to the edge of the cliff, and it started down, I couldn't stop it. And I think that's where we are today. This project has gone on and on, there've been hearings and meetings, and the public, I think, has gotten to the point of apathy, because there's nothing that they can do about it, because they don't have a vote in it. And I would ask that you do a, a better job of informing the voters of the city of Newport Beach, how, excuse me, how this city can afford to pay, the 55, or 58, or 60, or whatever the figure ends up, because you've got EIRs to worry about, you've got the Coastal Commission, you've got all those things that will delay a project, it may well be two years before you start it. And according to Mr. Torero, 25 percent a year, the figures go out the window. So I think, as I say, I'm a supporter of a new city hall, and I think a large part of the city, of Newport Beaches. But at the same time, there are a lot of people here, and I talked to a lot of them, who just don't have any idea of their participation or no in this process, and I think you ought to work on that. Thank you.
Hi, good evening again, I'm Paul Glowenke, I live at 427 Hazel in Corona del Mar. I am compelled to comment on this. This city needs, desperately needs, a new city hall. I am a Corona del Mar Residents Association alternate board member. I'm a community emergency response team member here in Newport Beach. I'm an active member at the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I'm on the membership committee for the Corona del Mar Chamber of Commerce. I built a house in this city at 427 Hazel, seven years ago. And I ran around the building department, and the planning department, and the fee department, and everywhere else. This city desperately needs a new city hall. Where you want to put it, I can't comment, because I don't know enough about it. The thing that's got me agitated partially is, nobody's here to comment, citizens, nobody's here. So you're flying solo, and my hat's off to each of you for making these decisions. Item two, the people that are here clearly aren't listening, because I heard $50 million is a good number. That's what I heard, whatever the number, 47,800?
Fifty-five.
I heard it's a good number. If you start it in June, it's a good number. I didn't hear anything about change orders, I didn't hear contracts. It's gonna be built off of 20 percent drawings. So the concept of, we don't have a full set of plans of drawing, well, big deal. The guy's on the hook for a good number. I also am compelled to say move forward quickly, because interest rates are rising. I have an office here in Newport Beach, I'm involved in the financial community, and every month that we wait, if we lose 10 basis points on overall prevailing interest rates, it drives the debt servicing up by about $50,000 a year. So taking action now, I would be in favor of Councilmember Ridgway's position, which is, let's get this thing done, decided, and move forward. I am also understanding of, nobody wants to be accused of not considering every option. So I don't know the depth of every other location that has been discussed or reviewed to the planning commission's report. So where you put it is up to you, but take action now, and let's get this thing built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Dolores Oding, I live in Newport Beach. Are these committees gonna be open to the public that you're going to be forming? Okay, that's one question. And I would hope that you would get some architects within our community, because we have some people with worldwide experience that have wanted to be involved, and have been ignored, and they can look at a site, and they know instinctively, just like LPA with the good job that they've done. So anyway, I would hope that would also happen. I'd like to know what your good-faith effort is to get this word out to the public, because I was at every single meeting that you had on this project, the first one was 10, we had almost 90, we had over 100 people at one Saturday meeting on a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful day. They asked questions, they wanted involvement, and they were slammed down every single time, and, and there were over a dozen people that left, okay? So the way that we have treated the public in this project has not been really that, as, I don't think it's been as hospitable as it should have been. We say we have all the money. We have $50 million coming in from the property tax, okay? The $50 million that we have coming in from property tax doesn't even cover the salaries and budget for the fire and the police department, okay? We need another 20 million on top of that, that we get from the Lexus dealership and from all the other things going on. And maybe it's not 20 million, maybe it's 15 million. Thirdly, I want to go over something that I don't like to do, but I'm going to do. A friend of mine put a lot of time into a document that some of you will be, that you'll all be receiving eventually, but she couldn't make it here tonight, because she's cooking Thanksgiving dinner. A lot of her friends are cooking, a lot of my friends are cooking Thanksgiving dinner. A lot of my other friends decided to leave town, because it's a holiday. So this is what you have left, because this is the time that you chose, all right?
Now, Dolores, before you start accusing us, because you came in, you came to the podium hot, and let's just stick to the facts.
I don't mean to, I am, I'm trying to.
I understand.
Now, my time is gonna go.
Your time's not gonna go, because you're gonna be able to speak. But don't accuse us of being flat-footed, obstinate, not listening to you, because the City Council has. Now, just go right ahead, but let's-
I will try to calm my voice down, so that you don't get offended, okay?
I'm not offended, but when you say we staged this, so that nobody would come, because it was on the 22nd of, I take offense at that. So that's what you said.
This is the time that was chosen, okay? This is it, this is where we are today, okay? This is what we have.
That's right, and it happens to be Thanksgiving two days from now.
Right, so anyway, okay, so can I move on now? Thank you.
Anything you want to say, it's open season on the mayor.
And, I, no, I don't want to do that. Okay, 19, 9/18/01. What I did with a friend of mine is, we went down to the Public Works Department, and we tried to find out information about all the other bidders on the project. And the sad thing I have to say is that we could find no information. And she compiled all this stuff, so I'll start out with 9/18/01 RFQ form. There was no invitation list that we could find, there was no public notice. The consultant should submit five copies of all materials. There was no copy found, we found no copies of anything. A selection committee will evaluate the responses of this RFQ, no record of the committee members. There was a verbal-
Point of, point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is not relevant to the act, the item before us tonight. She's reliving something from 2001.
Yeah, but it goes on the same way for everything. There is nothing in the files, there isn't any copies of any other people, there's no sign-in sheets, there's no walkthroughs. What I'm getting at is, the people kind of like, don't trust the way that we do business. And that that has to change and get better, because you want to go forward with a 55, 60 million dollar city hall, okay? You want to go forward with maybe 100 million dollars on infrastructure, and that doesn't even include, I mean, like, the repair of the streets, okay? The, the, all the pipes within the streets. We couldn't find one bid from anybody, okay? Let me just go on with this page, okay? Based upon the detail of, although now I'm totally lost. Thank you. Okay, "A selection committee will evaluate the responses to this RFQ." There was no selection committee, there was a verbal, that, that, we were told there was a verbal on February '05. We couldn't find any responses or any detailed review of, of, of any verbal that happened. "The most qualified firms will be asked to submit a proposal." No invitation list was found. "In the event negotiations are not successful with the most qualified firm, negotiations of the next most qualified firm will be held." When the conflict was discovered with Griffin structures, this policy was not followed. So if we're gonna end up spending more money in another year from now, maybe we should have thought about this when we waited 22 months. Maybe we should have done something then and moved forward. "Pre-submittals, conference site inspection, there was no sign-in sheet found." Response to the RFQ to the cit, to, I mean, like, to the city, there was no one found in the files. Notification to qualified firms to request pricing information, no record of anything. Responses due to the city, no record. I'm out there on a lot of weeks, so this is, this goes from '01 to, to today. So, and I'm sure that others of you have asked for documents and haven't gotten. I will go on and move on with the subjects, okay? All right? Because that is part of the problem, is people don't trust the process.
Well, Dolores, I'll give you an example. Come a year from now, you've got five seats, and you can, you can fill this council up, because you can, you've got five council seats, the new majority is waiting to be taken. And if you can spread this to the community, then you can have five candidates, and they can run.
It isn't a matter-
That's how it happens, Dolores.
It isn't a matter of spreading this to the community, it's a matter of ensuring that the way we do business is gonna be the best and the most ethical, okay? And it's gonna also be the most honest and fair way that we can do business in the city. So I'm, I'm glad that you're going to be, I will reaffirm option number two, okay? A lot of people come up and sign this petition, they don't have to be asked, we have almost close to 1,500 people right now, and people have been sick with colds, and so there hasn't been as many people as you would want out there. People want to have the right to vote, they sincerely do. As far as this site is concerned, the town hall meeting I went to, that Councilwoman Leslie Daigle was at, and Councilmember Nichols with the fire department, discussed the area of liquefaction, hurricane, tsunami, and flood, all right? This is where it is. Maybe we owe these 200 people a better place to live that, in case of an emergency, excuse me, you know, like, a better place to work in case of an emergency, nothing would happen to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, good night.
Mr. Mayor could I address a couple of the comments that I just heard?
Do you think that will be productive?
I think it needs to happen, because what I heard...
Well, City Manager, then I'll defer to you.
I heard, I heard a couple of words about, this situation requires honesty and ethical behavior. And just a couple of comments. One, I was at the Saturday public outreach meeting that over a hundred people attended. And some people left, about ten people left, because they demanded a vote on whether we needed a new City Hall or not. And a lot of other people said, "No, we came here in order to find out information." That was not acceptable to those people who left, because they wanted an up-and-down vote within the first five minutes of that meeting, and they did not get it, because that wasn't the purpose of the public outreach meeting. Another thing I heard was that there's no record of Mr. Torriero ever being hired. I think the information that Dolores talks about is, the space needs assessment that was done in two thousand and one. Every contract that was given to Mr. Torriero was done in an open city council meeting. I think Mrs. Oding attended most of those meetings, and there is certainly public record as far as the minutes as to what happened. My third and last point is, honesty and ethical behavior also is required in talking about a fifty to fifty-five million dollar City Hall. I think we heard that the project being proposed is forty-eight million dollars. It includes a parking garage, it also includes a fire station, and Mrs. Oding, in last Sunday's article, said a fifty million dollar City Hall. That is not ethical, that is not correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Attorney?
I think I need to add an additional piece of information. I know that Ms. Oding and another friend of hers, I think it was six or eight months ago, came and looked through all the planning depart, public works department records. They were all made available, all the information was there. The reason why she didn't find the information she was looking for and referring to in this message is because that was all information that was gathered back in two thousand and one, before the contract was entered into. There are staff reports that reflect the process that was gone through, but after a contract is entered into, the city doesn't keep the documents forever. And they don't need to keep them, because, and so with the, in hindsight, if you knew that two or three years in the future that this was going to go on, and people were going to look back to check on what process you went through, and whether you did it correctly, maybe the, at that point in time, public works department should have been keeping it. But the documents were not kept for the purpose of the fact that we were moving on with the selected contractor. And that was also explained.
Okay, all right. Back to you, sir. Please identify yourself.
I'm Garrett Smith, architect, resident of Newport Beach, fifty years. Practiced here, been retired twenty-eight years. I was lying in bed tonight when the mayor, you invited me to come down.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sure happy I came. As I said, I've practiced here for over twenty years. My clients were George Bucola, Dick Richards, Don Cole, the Wermingtons, Charlie Hester, John Klug, Dr. Beecham, the Luss, and George Arduus. So the buildings I was involved in are the Moana Apartments, Richards Market, Baylito Office Building, and the Newporter Inn, the first major hotel in Newport Beach. I'm giving this information, because most all of you are too young to recognize me and know where I come from. I'm here because John Bloom's article a month or so ago, in the paper, indicating he had ideas for a different location than here, and I understood that you'd be considering, perhaps, another location besides this location. I gave my resume, as you can see. I dealt with developers that did all kinds of development, large development, and had a great deal of experience working with people on planning and selecting sites, and location, location, location. If you were picking a spot for City Hall here in Newport Beach, you wouldn't pick this spot. If you could have any place, you'd pick it someplace else. And with eminent domain, you aren't restricted just to what the property the city owns. And this property would be worth a lot of money, and you probably could get it zoned properly, knowing the people you know. I say be bold. This is going to last for a long time, a lot longer than any of us. And if it takes an election, let it be an election. If it has to go through a green light, let it go. Do the right thing. Don't do it for some political reason, or because somebody's yanking your chain. I agree with the majority report on your committee, on Webb's representation, in favor of having a new City Hall, and good luck. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Warren, and I live at 1201 Surfline Way in Corona Del Mar. This property be, this property that I have as my residence would be overlooking the Great Park, as it is to be called, and many of you will recall the last two years, all of the work that we went through in getting this established with it, as a great park. I thought that the original picture of the City Hall in the newspaper did not give it credit. I thought that the revised edition was absolutely beautiful, and everyone I've talked to has thought the same way. Our area, our particular attendance area, being a former teacher at Newport Harbor High School, we have seen the citizens of this area accept the challenge of paying for a new bond issue to reconstruct the schools. I think the people realize that we need new facilities, we need new City Hall, we need new schools, and I think they're willing to take on these tasks of paying for them. And I think they're willing to pay for the future. So I commend you on getting this City Hall thing done, and I thought the, the plans were beautiful, and I thought Homer's analysis and arranging finance was very acceptable. And there's been people speaking in the room to justify that. Those of you who were involved in making the Great Park what it was, worked extremely hard. Of the seven council members that we have, only three of you were here at that period of time. When we were going through this process of views and all of that information, traffic, the room was full, it was standing room only, people were talking, they were very concerned about keeping these views of the ocean open, very, very concerned. And as a result, the city council listened and decided to set this up as a park. Funds were not available at the particular time, and as funds became available, they were moved over to another park site to be combined, so that we could get the senior housing project in, at the Corona Jamboree and Pacific Coast Highway. If this wouldn't have happened, this moving of funds and to concentrate on a special area, the park would have probably been done behind the library. One of the things that Newport Beach has always done, and especially Corona Del Mar, is to preserve the views of the residents. And this is very, very important. The values of the property rely solely upon the views. This is probably the best view area in the entire city of Newport Beach, and it's the area that could be ruined immediately with the building of buildings upon these hills. The daily travelers also from Laguna Beach and everything stood up and spoke, because it was important to them to see these views as they came into Pacific Coast Highway every day. Traffic in this area has increased, and it would increase even more if City Hall were to be moved into that particular area. Retail spaces increased in this particular area, office buildings have increased, and the daily traffic flow is almost unbearable. And I disagree with Mr. Nichols. I've never had a problem getting to City Hall where it is located. It's just, I've been able to drive in and out here every time I wanted, and I've lived here forty years. So I don't think the traffic is that bad getting in and out of here. But if this facility was added to that area over there, you've got to have new entrance onto MacArthur Boulevard, because just Avocado Street alone could not support that. The traffic on MacArthur Boulevard would increase drastically. The traffic on Coast Highway would increase drastic, drastically. So I don't think that that area is a very good area at all in which to build this facility. But I will say this, that I think you've done a good job. I think the people want this new City Hall. I think Mr. Ridgeway's suggestions made more sense than anything I've heard tonight. We have the property, we have a great set of plans, financing has been arranged, and I think that we've done a good job doing this. And I hope that you consider Mr. Ridgeway's suggestions. I hope you approve it tonight. I hope we get started. And I think the general population feels the same way. We want this for our City Hall, and we want it for our schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weida, unfortunately, it's ten o'clock, so you're going to have to wait, because we're taking a break.
Story of my life.
No, that's okay, you're used to it. That's why I used you as an example. Is that the council's pleasure? Okay, ten minutes, ten-ten.
Do I need to really fill one of these out? Should I fill one out?
Okay, we're reconvening, and this is our second batch of public comment on City Hall.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow City Council members. My name is Kevin Weida. My address is 429 30th Street, Newport Beach. Before I get started, I would also like to commend the mayor, Mr. Heffernan, for inviting the citizens out. I was also at home watching this on television and decided I better rush down here to get my two cents in. So, with that, here are my two cents. I am a local business owner in the Canary Village and have been a resident of Newport Beach for almost 30 years. My business specializes in redevelopment, and over the past decade have been very active in the revitalization of Canary Village and the surrounding area. As such, I am interested in seeing a new civic center project go forward. The current City Hall is in dire need of a complete transformation. I believe that the opportunity has passed for an alternate site location. As some of you may recall, I had pursued an opportunity to develop an alternate site in exchange to redevelop this current City Hall site. That did not materialize, and I believe it is now less likely that there is an alternative site. The only land resource that could be considered a real possibility for an exchange would be Irvine Company, and purely from an economic standpoint, I think the trade-offs might be too big of a hurdle to overcome. Furthermore, I believe, as many others, that the City Hall needs to remain on the peninsula for the peninsula to prosper. The city staff are grossly inefficient due to the cramped working conditions and poor layout of the current facility. As someone who does business with the city regularly, I can tell you that a new facility will greatly increase efficiencies. I am particularly interested in the one-shop-stop, so I'll definitely frequent that. The area will also benefit from the new parking structure and fire station. The Griffin Company and the design team of LPR Architects, Dan Heinfeld, Rick DiMato, and their staff have done an excellent job of creating a new civic center design that characterizes what Newport Beach is all about. The design will blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, looking to the future. The layout of the new building and council chamber will enhance the working conditions of City Hall and the community. Keeping it green is an added bonus. The concept of this building with the abstract sails, ocean art wall, is all about the city of Newport Beach. It will be a timeless addition to our great and world-class city. With the harbor and beaches, Fashion Island, Balboa Bay Club, Newport Coast, Corona Del Mar, the peninsula, and all of the other wonderful places, businesses, and people Newport Beach has to offer, we are greatly behind and lacking on this front. City Hall should be representative of and compatible with the rest of Newport Beach. Remodeling is not the answer. Do we want to drive a patched-up $40 million Ford or a $50 million Mercedes? I'm a supporter of this project, and I urge this council to do so as well. Take our great city into the future. On a closing note, I would say that if you're taking volunteers' names for a committee that might be put together as an alternative, you can certainly throw my name into the hat if you think I might be of some value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Billings. I fully support the recommendation by Councilmember Selich and Councilmember Webb to form a committee for City Hall Review Committee and Finance Committee to look at, again, starting back to square one again, at the process of other locations, other designs, and other financing mechanisms versus the one design, one location, which we've been -- I put it nicely -- force-fed. The reason I say that is I did go to the public hearings. I went to all four. Yes, we started off with 90 to 100, then it went down to 40, and then down to maybe, what, 20 or 25? Well, the reason you saw the decline was because people went to those first few, and we all made the recommendations or suggestions or questions that now Councilmember Selich has brought up, which is, what about other locations? What about other designs? And what about the cost? 55 million now. Over 30 years, it's gonna be more than 3 million a year. It's gonna be close to like 3.6, and that's gonna be over $100 million. But, you know, we need to, again, unfortunate that we've spent the $650,000, $650,000, and now we have to start over, but I am happy that -- and I have had some conversations with Councilmember Selich on the thought process behind the building committee, and it totally makes sense. And I'm not in the minority. I mean, read the paper. I've talked to a lot of residents in the community, and they all have these same questions, anywhere from, hey, we don't need a new City Hall, to, yes, we do, but we need to look at other alternatives. So, this is the right process. I would like to see a balanced committee of residents, architects, and historians. We have some wonderful architects in the city who really know the history of Newport. They probably do it pro bono in terms of helping even, you know, ultimately design it, like Mr. Glass, Mr. Bissell, Mr. Ficker. I, too, grew up in Newport, and I really appreciate the, you know, what's special about Newport and the historical maritime atmosphere that we have. And so, we really do need to listen to the people, and I think that's what Councilmember Selich and Webb are putting forward. And I know there's elections next year, and I will say, at least based on this issue, both of you definitely get my vote. So, I hope you proceed with alternative 1, 2, 3, and 4. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Heffernan and members of the City Council, my name is Val Scorro. I live in Corona Del Mar, which I believe is the city of Newport Beach.
Since 1920.
First, I would like to say I'm strongly in favor and updated in new City Hall. It's badly needed. To me, the key is, whatever we do, it might well be here for the next centennial, and let's take our time and do it right. As such, I am strongly in support of the Webb-Selig motion. Now, one of the key areas to me is the architecture and aesthetics of the building. We are a world-class city, and in my estimation, the current design falls short in the design aspects. We should have something of architectural digest quality as far as the design, ambiance, and creativity of the new City Hall. In talking to many residents, the preponderance are very concerned about the current design of the proposed City Hall. As a suggestion, why don't we get three or four architects to come up with some competing designs and maybe have it as part of the centennial effort where the citizens can vote on a particular design, and at some centennial meeting say, you know, this is the winner, this is what the most of the residents want to have. You know, we can make something out of it. I'm sure, as mentioned previously, we can get some pro bono architecture individuals wanting to participate. Maybe as a reward, they get their name on a plaque on the wall. I think the current people who did an excellent job as far as function and need for the City Hall, and I think we have a base to work from, but I think we want to get more people involved, and that might be one way to do it. But we do need a City Hall, and those are my recommendations, and I think recommendations of a lot of people I've talked to. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Heffernan and councilmen. My name is Barbara Rawlings. I've lived in Newport Beach since 1956, and I probably outdate all of you. I've been active within the community all of that time. I watch all the city council meetings on TV. I personally think that for all councilmen, the reruns should be mandatory viewing. There are lessons to be learned in common sense and common courtesy. I read the Daily Pilot Forum, Mailbag, Councilman Ridgeway, Mayor Heffernan, Dolores Otting, and more commentary. I'm active in my neighborhood association. I own and run a business not far from here. Tonight, I was watching the council TV -- council meeting on TV, and I tried very hard not to take Mayor Heffernan's comments personally, but here I am. Public outreach does not mean that the public input gets heard. Public outreach often comes long after consultants have been hired and thousands of dollars spent. Public outreach is frustrating and, to many of us, time-consuming and appears unheard. Public outreach seems to have to work through initiative. Public outreach should include give and take, not just take. We often feel blindsided by having to take it. I was at the Saturday public outreach meeting. How many comments and suggestions from that meeting are in the expenditure of 55 million? There are a lot of us concerned citizens who want our city to move ahead. We can't advise you on your vote because our presence comes too late, and I don't just mean tonight. It's not apathy, it's futility. I hope you move ahead with Don Webb and Selich's proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joe O'Hara. I'd like to second that comment. Gentlemen, councilwoman, your problem is of your own making. You did a lousy job of selling. No one ever asked, "Do you want it?" They just asked for comments on several alternative approaches. Every time an issue was raised as to something other than the three alternatives, it was put down. My disagreement is more with the process than with the product. I don't have any problems with city staff improving its working conditions in one way or another, but you jammed this at the people. You did it in an ineffective manner. Here are three options: comment on them and on nothing else. And that's a quote, by the way. You then packaged a three-way parlay to make it more palatable. You'd already arranged to avoid public involvement by going the COP route. You handled Councilmember turnover replacement at the -- whatever occurred around this time in a manner that, right or wrong, raised suspicion of the general public. I recommend that you take it back to the drawing boards. Determine the inner relationships, the needs, the traffic volumes. Form the committees. Take a serious look at the situation. Don't try to sell us something that's already been predetermined. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Heffernan and City Council. My name is Wallace Olson. I live in Corona Del Mar. Actually, I live in Irvine Terrace. I've been there since September of 1958. Prior to that, I lived on Balboa Island, Little Balboa Island, that is. I'm a professional engineer, been one for 50 years, and a licensed building contractor in the state of California for 30 years. Sorry, my voice is a little hoarse tonight. Tonight, the council will make a very, very important decision on your future home in the city for generations to come. Will it be based on a six-month study to explore other suitable City Hall sites, a second concurrent six-month study to determine the financial burden and ability to best pay for the City Hall, and 15 other future facility needs? Or will you reject the Buildings Committee recommendation and continue your pursuit at its present location and modified warehouse design? Many of you are in real estate and are very familiar with the phrase, "location, location, location." I can see it all over there. I believe that holds true here. We don't want to build on the current site at sea level and pay a premium for construction costs and have to continue to buy expensive flood insurance at a site that is not even centrally located. We don't want to have to pay for two expensive moves when an off-site location would only require one move. We do want to be readily accessible to all Newport Beach residents and have a City Hall that has architectural presence that is lasting, and 50 years or more from now will be considered a classic, not a dated structure. As a professional engineer and building contractor, I strongly recommend the six-month study effort be initiated. We need to set goals, but if some of the reasons that are written results are not finished, I trust that an extension will be granted. This is not a simple task, and trade studies need to be conducted and documented so you, the council, will have sufficient information to make an enlightened decision. As John Ruskin once said, you've probably heard this before, you got my email, "When we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight or present use alone. Let it be such that work, as our descendants, will thank us for what we have done and say, 'See this our fathers did for us.'" This is a good visionary motto to follow, and I noticed in the -- in closing, I noticed in the pilot today something that kind of caught me, what Councilwoman Leslie Diggle said. I think she's got it nailed, the best words I've heard yet. "I think what's important is that the community feels that no stone has been left unturned. It's a generational decision that's going to affect our community for the next 50 years." That's good. I also noticed in here where Homer Bludahl talked about the Irvine Company having a suitable property for us last January. I don't know what happened to that. Did that blow up? Anyway, thank you very much, Mayor, and councilmen, and councilwomen. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and I hope that we do what Ed Selich and Don Webb have requested. It's the only way to go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gary Esch from Roder. And I've lived in the area for
And I've lived in the area for, I guess that's the late 70s. Never come to, well, never spoken to the City Council before, and I appreciate the mayor's invitation to do so tonight. That's why I'm not all dressed up. I'm a commercial realtor and have been since the late 70s. I'm not a developer, I'm not a contractor, so some of these things, I'm, you know, I can't really comment on. But why would this city, and I'm a little bit familiar with Mr. Tori Arrows' work, and he builds a great building, by the way. I believe that if he were awarded the contract, he would do a great job. I'm a little familiar with LPA's work, and they design a great building. And I believe if they were awarded the contract, they would do a great job. But I don't understand why the city would do a design-build project and not bid the project to other developers and other architects. That's how normal developers operate. Why did the city choose not to go that route? I didn't understand that. I also didn't understand why the city has chosen this route to finance using COPs that don't require a public vote on such a major expenditure. $50 million is going to turn into $90 to $100 million at three or three and a half million per year. That seems like something that the city should vote on. Why not use regular bond financing, which requires a city vote? I believe we need a new City Hall. I don't know if it's in this location, but I really appreciate Mr. Selich and Mr. Webb's motion to explore other alternatives. And since it was the Building Committee's recommendation, with one person dissenting, why not go with the Building Committee's recommendation? You guys are the experts. I read these four points, and they're all very well-written. We accept the Griffin Structures Design Development Contract as fulfilled. They did a great job. I understand they were paid well for the work. And number two, I won't reread this, it's all here in black and white, but it seems to make a lot of sense to me. So I hope that's the way you vote tonight. It seems like that's the temperature of the people that have spoken so far, and from what I've read in the pilot, it seems like that's the temperature of the people that have written in as well. I don't know, do I have a time limit here? If I do, tell me if I'm running.
Light screen, go ahead.
Tell me if I'm running.
When that light turns yellow then red, then, right?
This one here?
Yep.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
I also understand there's a, there's a group in the, in town called Newporters for Responsible Government who are submitting a petition to sign that would, that would require that, that major expenditures go before the public, with over maybe 1,200 signatures already that they've obtained. So there isn't apathy in the city. I think people would want to get involved, given the choice. So that's something that, that I think is a good idea. Let's see, I made a few other notes here. I'm probably not going to be able to hit everything. Running out of, I can't read my writing here, my chicken scratch. I think those were my main points, and thank you for, for, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming down.
My name is Ray Price, a longtime resident of Newport Beach, and I want to thank Mayor Heffernan for encouraging me to come down here tonight. I was sitting, watching the council on television, and said, "Well, I better get down because I think this is an important issue." I really have, I'm in favor of the Webb Selich motion, but there's four issues that I wanted to bring up. Some of them have been touched on a bit tonight. One is kind of the focus on the large picture, that I think that the City Hall needs to be a place in the center of the community, a place where people engage in discussions, a place where people can protest, a place where people can have celebrations and so forth, and I don't believe it's here. And my office is just two blocks from here. I drive this road all the time. I know what the traffic's like. I know what it's like in the summertime, and I feel for everybody that has to make the route up and down Newport Boulevard during those high-traffic times. So I think that really the, the place, and I think I told Mayor Heffernan about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, on the telephone when he asked me about where I thought City Hall should go, and I said, "I think it should go in Newport Center. Newport Center is the center and the focus of Newport Beach." Now, this is a wonderful place down here, and I love my office, and I love riding around on my bicycle and walking to the beach, and it's great, but it's not the place where you engage in the community. It really isn't. It hasn't been that way for a long time. So I think the large picture of where the location is has to be one that, that is really focused on, on the community and engaging in the, in the community. The second issue has to do with coming down to this particular site, which I think has a wonderful opportunity that I would hope would not be missed because of our urgency to fulfill a need of a new City Hall, which I think we need, in this location, because I think there's opportunities here to make this a wonderful place and to plan this whole area with this piece of property so centrally located in the village here, to become a really a focus of what Newport Beach should really be in the future. Public access to the bay, some residential, mixed-use, some commercial, some restaurants, boardwalks where people can walk around the bay and enjoy it. So here's an opportunity, the central part of this village, this wonderful piece of land, that could help be the nucleus for the development of all this Lido Village and Canary Village area. So I think it's an opportunity that, once you focus and build City Hall here, it could be an opportunity missed. Thirdly, when we come down to the structure itself, I'm sure it works wonderfully for the staff. I know a lot of study went into how it works for the, and how it functions, and it's probably a very efficient building. My concern is twofold. One, I don't think it has, and I think a gentleman here before me spoke about, it doesn't have a sense of this is the center of the community and this is the place where the, the city government resides. I don't know that will, will, will make the test of time, and I think this kind of structure should. I think it's, it's a place where people want to identify as this, as the center of the, of the community. I'm kind of, you know, I look at the, the elevations, I looked at the first ones that I thought were very weak, that were published, and we put a little lipstick on it. Now it looks a lot better, but it's still not the stately structure that it needs to The, the fourth item that I wanted to mention is that I'm concerned about the whole design-build process. I think the only person that wins in a design-build, it's kind of like a lawsuit, the only ones that win are the attorneys, and I think in a design-build, the only one that wins is the contractor. And, and, and what happens is, is that you get great designers to design wonderful buildings, and they're constrained because someone's pulling over here saying, "It costs too much, you can't do that." And then it ends up, the architects want to design something that will meet the test of time and will be a stately structure, but it's the other side pulling, saying, "Oh, we can't afford that." I would rather see us go to this process of, of hiring a fine architect, and LPA is a wonderful architectural firm, and take the constraints off them, let their creativity come out, find out what the thoughts are and how they can bring a structure to a point where it is a stately part of the community, and then figure out a way to how you can afford to build it, either in stages or, excuse me, the value engineering process where maybe there's some alternatives, or in the competitive bid process of construction. Okay? So those are the four points I wanted to make. I think we do need a City Hall. I, I go down to City Hall and, and process plans. I, I know the difficulty that the staff has in, in those, in these facilities, so I am for a new City Hall, but those are my arguments. Well, thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Batall, resident of Newport Beach. I'll speak first as the official spokesman for Newporters for Responsible Government. We are the group that is out gathering signatures for petition, putting initiative on the ballot to allow the voters to decide whether to incur debt via COPs for the City Hall and for other facilities. As spokesman for NRG, I would heartily support the Building Committee's recommendations that the council step back from the project, take a pause, hear the community. The community is speaking, speaking here tonight, speaking through the letters to the editor in the, in the Daily Pilot, speaking to each one of you in your daily rounds. Consider other sites. Consider other designs, and look at the other facility needs that you expect over the next 15 years and how the cost of this project, this City Hall, fire station, parking garage project fits in with all of those. The most compelling argument that I've heard tonight in favor of going forward with the project and rejecting the Building Committee's recommendations is, is that it's going to cost more if you wait. But I would submit to you that to make a wrong decision, just because it can be done more cheaply now, is not wisdom. I mean, we're all faced with those decisions in our own lives. Many of us have faced a housing market, rapidly appreciating housing market, and we've been tempted, perhaps, to purchase a property that didn't meet our needs because we're afraid that we wouldn't be able to support the property that would need our needs. I would urge you to exercise the restraint which the Building Committee is recommending that, that you do, and to, to listen to the community in a meaningful way. You'll earn the respect of the community. One final point I would make is that, now speaking as an individual, I've heard one argument also advanced in favor of preserving the City Hall at this location, be that if you move the City Hall, you'll have to put the development of this location to a greenlight vote, and those darned greenlight people, they'll oppose anything. Well, I disagree. I am a greenlight supporter, and I can tell you that many greenlight supporters and others will support a well-planned redevelopment of this property here if it comports with the character of Lido Village and the rest of the neighborhood character here. It just, a previous speaker indicated you just have to do a better sales job. You didn't do a good sales job on this particular project, but, you know, we all learn from our mistakes, and I think that the council is redressing those errors. Don't reject the opportunity to move to a better location by assuming that you can't do anything with this property other than a park. I don't think that's a fair conclusion. It's not fair to the community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council persons. My name is Jan Vanersood. I live in Newport Heights. I came down to the meeting tonight because of Mayor Heffernan's exhortation for people to get off their couch and come down and speak, and at that time, you mentioned there were 15 people here, and I, I think eventually 20 people said they were here, but one person left, so there were a total of 19 people, and of those 19 people, 15 people have spoken in support of the Webb Selich alternative, and four people have spoken in favor of Mr. Ridgeway's support. And I also favor the Webb Selich alternative, that we should step back from this process and go back and identify other alternatives, and I don't necessarily mean a different location, especially the location above the library. I am adamantly opposed to your considering that location, and I think that should be taken off the table. That should be one stone that is left unturned, because that stone has been there since 1992. It was dedicated to the city by the Irvine Company as part of the 1992 Ciosa Agreement. It's supposed to be open space, and that's what it's supposed to be. In the past, the citizens have had to stave off a senior housing project, they've had to stave off an arts and cultural center, and now we have to stave off a City Hall proposal for that park site. We have take, the, the city has taken the time and the effort to develop plans for that park. It was largely developed along the lines of SPON suggestions. The, a name has been given to that park, it's the Newport Center Park. An individual has come forward to pay for improving that park. We're just about there to make it a park, and as long as it sits there as open space, some person is going to suggest that you put a building there, and I think that's something that should be taken off the table. Having said that, I think that we ought to reconsider what can be done with this existing site. I like this site. I've been, I've lived in Newport Beach for 25 years, and I think that this site is a good site for City Hall. It has historical characteristics to it. It probably should eventually be on the National Registry of Historic Places. I think that the idea to keep green open space on this site is a good idea. I like the idea that you've kept the ficus trees and landmark trees in the front. I hope those don't go. I would also suggest that you keep the rose garden and that you keep the remaining trees on this property. There's some 20 or 30 different trees on this property that would be bulldozed away. I think that you should consider, in considering alternatives, is a different building envelope, and I think that building envelope should basically comport with what the footprint is today, and using that footprint, you would save the open spaces that we save here today. I'm also much in favor of the right of the people to vote on this project, and I think that, that's something that's been missing. It was something that was rejected from the first town hall meetings that we had, and I think that has turned off a lot of people. I think a lot of people have, are thinking that the, the council is going to do what it's going to do, the people can't, don't have much input. Therefore, I suggest that people sign the, the initiative, the financing, the debt financing initiative that, that NRG Newporters for Responsible Growth is circulating so that we can, so that the people of the city do have an altern, a way to make sure that they will decide what the city does with its money. I mean, as it is now, you're basically condemning the city to paying $3 million a year for 30 years, or over $100 million. If we're going to spend that amount of money, the people should be able to vote on it. Therefore, I think that people should, if they want to vote on the City Hall, they should vote, they should get out in the shopping centers and sign the petitions that are being circulated right now. But in essence, I think that if you actually follow what the people have said tonight, there basically is a three-to-one consensus from the public that you vote for the Webb Selich amendment. Thank you.
WR Building, live on the Balbo Peninsula. Councilman Ridgeway, I drove six and a half hours, and I appreciate the fact this meeting was tonight. I get to sleep in my own bed instead of two days later, getting out of town. I was here on the 25th during oral communications. I questioned your right to design-build. I've had no reply, but from what I've heard here this evening, it seems like, with the two council members, I've heard them, quote, "design, bid, build." When the report from the committee was read, I was thrilled to death to hear the program or project manager at risk, the legality question of it. I was here to address that tonight. One of the reasons I came back today, City of San Diego is taking on the same thing they had 18 months ago, a Proposition B, which was a charter amendment, giving them the right to use this, won by 500 votes. Now, it's legally possibly ready to be challenged at state level, whether it's in conflict with state law. When the presenter, he mentioned the public contract code, talked about the traditional design-bid-build. I think the majority of you recognize this, this is the way, maybe it's not right. Orange County, effective January the 1st, has the privilege of using design-build if they want to go through all the rigmarole. There was a statute that will be effective, and more counties will have an attempt. In Sacramento, we, the construction industry, have been monitoring this very close. Many of the requirements that have been added in these statutes for design-build is a Many of the requirements that have been added in these statutes for design, build is for compliance of other sections of the law that are not normally followed, particularly by the smaller entities. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As far as the issues, I've been a property owner here since 1965, lived here for two years, left for 37, and just came back the first of the year. I'm not going to address location, design, that type of thing. The only other comment I will make was back in '64 and '65, there was a lot of room in this city hall in the Public Works and Building Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Gaffney. I live at 216 King's Place, and I too was planning on being here tonight, but I was actually in surgery yesterday and watching on TV, but I felt I needed to come back down here as well. First of all, I was able to at least see on TV Kelton Ridgway's statements, and I happen to agree completely. Waiting any longer on this, you've already gone through these studies, you've paid a lot of money to get this far. Just pushing it any further is all it's going to do, is cause more money. It's going to take more people to sit here and debate this back and forth, and we'll never get a resolution. I come down to this city hall, the Building Department, I'm an architect, and you definitely need this facility. If I understand it, Griffin Structures is sitting here saying he'll guarantee the price right now, today, based on 20% drawings. We don't have to worry about all these change orders and these other issues that keep coming up. He's willing to go in and build this now. He's got a great reputation with what he's done. LPA has done a great job with the design, and it's a facility that we really need to have, and I'm clearly in support of it. And I'll cut this short so I can get back home, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is John Nelson, 110 Villorca. After listening to all the discussion here tonight, one word comes to mind: sophistry. For those who may not be familiar with the term, sophistry is the use of fallacious arguments with the intent to deceive. If the proposed civic center could be built with sophistry, there was enough of it put forward tonight that you wouldn't have to need to worry about issuing COPs. The issue before the council tonight is whether or not to move ahead with the civic center plan that has evolved to this point, or to reevaluate whether the current site is the best location for the city hall. Now, many speakers here tonight keep talking about alternative locations to this site. One thing I haven't heard is any specifics as to where this site might be, or how much it would cost to obtain such site. And if this gentleman here has something to say, I'll be glad if you have my time to him, because it's difficult to be talking with him rattling off in the background.
Let's have a point order here. We'll just freshen our attitude up. Let's go ahead, Sir Nelson.
Alternative sites have already been explored in depth and found not to be feasible. These sites can be revisited, but in the end, you're only going to be right back where you are tonight. It appears that we are rehashing issues and options that have already been debated at previous meetings. I don't believe the city has many viable options. Thanks to Greenlight, the current city hall site has no value other than being a civic center. It isn't zoned for its highest and best use, and any change in zoning would be held hostage by Greenlight. Secondly, if some other site becomes available, it would require a zoning change that would again be held hostage by Greenlight. And it is wishful thinking to believe that Greenlight would go along with any proposal. So as I see it, the current city hall site is the most practical and doable, and all efforts on the civic center project should be focused on the current city hall site. Now, I've heard talk tonight about this proposed COP petition. As for the proposed petition, as for the petition for this proposed initiative, it was mentioned earlier, the state legislature has provided for the use of COPs as a means to allow local governments to pay for important public projects. It is a means that should not be given up or be made subject to the expensive and time-consuming electoral reviews by people with limited knowledge on the particular issue at hand. This initiative is nothing more than an attack on representative city government. The majority of the residents have already spoken and have elected this council to run the affairs of the city. The residents have given this council the decision-making authority because the vast majority of us do not have the time or the inclination to get involved in the minute details and debate of city issues. As such, the residents have deferred a certain amount of trust in this council and their knowledge and judgment. In my opinion, the proposed initiative is an assault on their judgment. It is unfortunate and extremely unfair for the council to be second-guessed and criticized by a few of the vocal minority. The council should be allowed to do its job without interference or obstruction from this small group of vocal individuals. Now, the opponents of this civic center project, in my opinion, are a group of arrogant self-appointed gatekeepers with a fading vision that can't see beyond the full-time commitment to opposition and resistance without a sniff or care for any consequence beyond their immediate agenda. They stall all attempts to better the city with expensive, time-consuming electoral reviews, better left to the officials already elected and deemed qualified to do that task. Now, some of the opponents of this project who have spoken tonight are individuals with political aspirations. They are attempting to turn this issue into a political cause in order to further their personal political ambitions. In doing so, they are putting their own self-angradizement above the interests of the people of this city.
Mr. Nelson, maybe you can wrap it.
Yes.
Thank you.
The civic center project should not be made into political football. It is a straightforward issue that is based on the patently obvious fact that the city hall is undersized and physically inefficient to the point where city services are adversely affected. I urge the city council to support Mr. Ridgway's motion and move ahead with this project immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard from about everybody. I'm going to close public comment unless I see somebody else. All right, public comment is closed. I hope nobody's going to rush down here from their house and throw me to the ground, but that's where it is. I'm going to bring this back to council. Any comments here, Mr. Ridgway? You had the first motion?
Just a few comments. We do have a geological study, hydrology study. There is no liquefaction at this site. We have actually engineered the footings pursuant to time-aged, proven mechanism that the Romans used, and it works very well, so that was misinformation. The other misinformation was that people coming down Newport Boulevard will be impacted. The citizens of this community don't come down Newport Boulevard. That's Costa Mesa or anybody coming from the outside. We have 3,000 visits a day, mostly by our citizens, either paying bills or coming here for services, and they actually use Pacific Coast Highway, MacArthur, Jamboree, or whatever roads that are basically local. We're not a freeway-oriented site. So I just want to make those last few comments. I think it's important to note, and so I think everything else has pretty well been discussed. I've heard nothing that would change my mind.
Okay. Selich?
Well, I think Councilman Webb pretty well expressed my opinions on things, and I'm not going to restate, restate those things. I'll just, just add a couple of things. When I got on the city council, I thought this city hall was a done deal. Little did I, little did I realize. I think that a lot of the things that we're asking these two committees to do are questions that have arisen in my mind during the time I've been on the council and studying this issue. And I have asked those questions numerous times, and I've received a lot of answers in the forms of conclusion, but little documentation on how they were arrived at. And I know that myself personally, I would feel much more comfortable making my final decision on what we do with the city hall situation, knowing that I had some documentation on how we arrived at our conclusions on a lot of these questions that have been arisen. So I think this is a valuable process. It's a, it's a few months that it's going to take to do it, but I think that will, you know, add a lot of credibility to whatever we decide in the end to have gone through this and get these answers, have documented analysis and conclusions that we can rely on when we do make our final decisions. So with that, I, with everything I've heard this evening, and I still stand with the building committee recommendation.
Okay. Who else wants to weigh in?
I guess I diverge somewhat here from Councilman Webb and Selich tonight. As I look at this, there's probably four main issues here, and I'm going to just run through them quickly because it's hours late. I think we need to get to a vote, but the first one is, is the need for the facility. I haven't heard any council member here tonight say that we have no need for the facility. I think we did an extensive needs assessment. I think we've demonstrated through that needs assessment and through our outreach to the community, and we've done substantial outreach to the community despite what many of the commentators and members of the public have said here tonight. We had a list up here on our presentation of all the council meetings where we've gone over finances. I think one comment tonight was that, you know, we really should explain COP financing to the public. Well, we had a whole presentation on COP financing, and we've discussed it at finance committee meetings, and I know that there's been discussions by the mayor with the finance team, extensive discussions about COP financing. I think we've demonstrated an ability to pay for the city hall through COP financing. So anyway, getting back to my list, as far as need goes, I think we've demonstrated a need. I don't even think any of the, the comment, the people who commented tonight said that there's no need for a city hall, that we can just make do with what we have. So I think we've addressed the need issue. I think we've gone past that. And so then we come to the location issue. And again, we've spent several meetings, I think, discussing location. Location was decided two years ago, and sure, we could go back and revisit it, but the bottom line is I think we'll spend six months and we'll come back to the same decision. That city hall, where it is now is where it needs to be. You know, we could, we could look at other locations, but I'll just echo what Councilman Ridgway said, that we have issues with what we'll do with this site. If we relocate the site and we decide, okay, we'll buy another site at Fashion Island, let's say, or Newport Technology Center. Well, that's more money. That's additional money. Newport Technology Center, the last number I heard was 60 to 80 to 90 million dollars for that piece of property, and it's a shell, and it's not even suitable for what we want. So we're not, if you're talking about multiples there, well, think of that multiple and that location. And we've talked about Fashion Island, that's probably some of the most expensive real estate in our city. I mean, how are we going to afford five acres over there without even being able to sell this property until it's been rezoned? It'll take years to accomplish that, years and votes by the residents. So, you know, we could spend six months looking at the location, but I think ultimately we'll come back to the same decision that we made. The, I've seen it in the past, and I've only been a council member two years now, but I, you know, the answer's going to be, well, the committee decides this is a good location, and the answer's going to be, you know, the committee was handpicked by the council, and of course they were going to have that decision, and then there'll be, still won't be an agreement. The residents or the ones that are complaining still will not agree that this is a suitable location for city hall. So I don't know what the extra six months is going to buy us, except for a little bit more hair pulling and just take us that much further down the road and, and really waste the effort that's been made up until this point, because we put in a significant amount of effort, but to delay it further, it's just additional cost, additional time, when I think we've addressed those, those questions adequately and sufficiently. As far as the design of the new city hall, that may be its weakest point. I don't know that the design is totally finished. I certainly was a critic of the design, and I had requested several significant changes which were made, and I think those, my, my major questions were significantly addressed. You know, as far as the aesthetics of it, certainly, you know, we can work on that if the community wants to have a little bit more input in the design, or if we can solicit some more input on the design. I don't think that's, that's uncalled for, but even the design, I think, has come a long way. And I don't think we're ever going to have 100% commitment on whatever design we pick for city hall. We can make this, you know, a Tudor mansion, and people wouldn't like it, and we can make it, you know, an igloo, and some people would like it and other people wouldn't. So, you know, I just think that ultimately, we're going to have to pick a design, and some people are going to like it and some people won't, and I guess time will be the test. But I think we did come up with a fairly good design, and certainly I have no objections to working on a little bit more, but I think we do need to move forward with the design that we have on the boards right now. And the last issue, I've already somewhat addressed it, is financing the city hall. I mean, we can set up a finance committee, and we can look at the alternatives, but as I see it, there's, if we do agree that we need a city hall, and we're going to build a city hall somewhere, whether it's here or somewhere else, there's really three options. There's three options. There's, there's bond obligation, which requires a citywide vote, and that's going to be an extra line item on everybody's tax bill. And I don't know any, I certainly don't want that, and I don't, but there's nobody in this room here that wants to have another $200 or $300 a year tacked on to their tax bill. And so I just don't see that as a viable alternative. You know, we have, we could save the money, certainly, over the next 10 years or 15 years, however long it takes to save $50 million, but by the time we get 10 or 15 years out, it's not going to be $50 million anymore, $55 million, or whatever number you want to put in. It's going to be $105 million. And so we'll still be behind the curve. We could look at the COP financing, which I think, again, we've had presentations on. We've demonstrated the city's ability to handle the debt. It doesn't increase anybody's tax bill. It's not going to be an extra $200 or $300 a month that we, it'll be come out of regular general fund revenues. I think that that's the way to go. Our, our city is fiscally conservative, and that's why we do have the ability to finance a project out of our regular tax revenues that we're already deriving, not additional tax revenue that we're going to place an additional burden on the community. So, you know, unless someone comes up with a miracle option, maybe we can buy lottery tickets and win the mega lottery and finance our city hall that way. I guess that would be a fourth alternative, but obviously highly unlikely. So I see, again, where six months down the road, we'll find out COP financing is the way to go, and so we'll beat ourselves up for another six months for nothing. So, again, I don't think the process has been perfect. I've tried to have some input along the way as far as informing the community. I think we have addressed the substantial obligation to inform the community as to what we're doing, to bring the community along with us. It's been a multi, I've been working on this two years, and I think it was another couple of years before I got on city council, this process. And so it's not like this has come up overnight. Anybody who says that is, is not living in the real world. And so, you know, I'm in favor of just, you know, if we feel that we don't need a city hall, or we don't like this project, then let's just vote it down tonight. Personally, that's what I think. I think we need to be leaders. I think we need to make a decision, and if that's a decision, then fine, I'll live with that. If the four people up here say that we shouldn't have a new city hall, then let's move on, you know, let's move on to the next thing. But to drag this thing out some more, just to put it, you know, next June or July, or whenever these committees or committees are going to come up with their answers, is just ridiculous, in my, in my opinion. So I'm just in favor of voting it up or down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Well, I made an initial statement. I'll make a second statement. One of the things that I had a problem with was the jobs that are located here. We have a lot of people that work outside. I mean, they're, they're in the yards, they're, they're going out to check construction. These jobs, I believe those people are in city hall These jobs, I believe those people are in city hall only a very limited amount of time, and, and I can verify that. I mean, I can just look in the trailer we have parked out here, they're not there. In fact, they only have one person assigned there any one day. But we have all the cars parked out here, so we get them, when we had the electric cars, so they would all get recharged, you know. Now I guess we're getting rid of electric cars, thank God. Basically, I think we can do a better job of where we staff our personnel. And by doing that, and, and by going to more electronics, we can maybe get rid of some of the problems that we have at city hall. And by thinking ahead that way, I think we can clean up its operation as well as we're what we need in the future at that single location. I note that when we had our disaster preparedness drills, we had them over in Fashion Island. We had them in the fire department over there. I mean, the, the city police department over there. With regard to rezoning a city hall, the comment's been made, oh, Greenlight wouldn't vote for anything. Well, I'm a Greenlight candidate. I certainly don't think I'm going to hold it back. I think a lot of the people who talked were the people who put the initiative on. They're not talking about stopping rezoning a city hall. So I, it seems to me that this can be done. There is not a problem doing it. They represented sixty-six percent of the citizens in the reason why everybody's going to COPs. Because my God, we could never get a vote of the city to do this. So I think we can get a vote of the city, and I don't think it's such a bad problem. The problem is, is that we've got to be doing what the citizens want. Lastly, the city hall design, I, I do think that we'd need, need still to relook at that a little bit. We're back to the fire department design where you drive up and you do a U-turn, but you couldn't change lanes. If you just changed lanes and came in the side over there, you know, you could just drive in. You only got to change one lane. But evidently, a fire engine cannot change lanes from one, you know, on the street, but he can do a U-turn in a, in a half a street. So this is what we're looking at. So I, I don't know, maybe I can't understand these things, but actually I can. I'm an engineer and have enough background to do it quite well, thank you. But I, I believe that we need to look at these things, and I, and I think that we are now. And I, and I think that's good, and it's good for the community. And as far as the property, I just mentioned the one over at, at Newport Center, because we own that. And we are not being contested for using that. And yes, we do have to change the zoning on it, but the park we're putting in there is a weed park. We're not putting in a park that anybody can use. We're putting in a weed park. And I don't know how many of you guys are tired, but I'm tired of weed parks. I'd like to have parks that we can use. So I'm going to vote for the alternative here to, to take a look at this thing in a proper manner, and, and I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to get the thing where we can support it all and, and move ahead. Thank you very much.
Here, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Okay, Councilman Dagel?
Yes, I, I know I've been waiting for the recommendation of the building committee, and certainly there's a time to lead and a, and a time to follow. And I have not been sitting here that long, and I'm not always sure when to lead and, and when to follow. What I have learned so far, though, is that any idea that unless people participate in that idea, they will not embrace it. And so I believe that we need to vest more people in our city hall project. My instincts tell me is that we have not heard enough from the public on this issue. I take very seriously both the issues of the right size, the correct location, the financing, looking at a comprehensive plan of infrastructure, and also quite seriously what my colleagues in the council say about leadership. And on the leadership issue, I sought out part of the foundation of our republic. And if you read, for example, in the Federalist Papers, and as you probably know, the entire purpose of the Federalist Papers was to gain popular support for our constitution. So even our constitution required a sales job. And what is widely regarded as one of the most brilliant public relations campaign in history gave the clear message that in our republic, it's not that easy to get things through government, and it shouldn't be that easy, so that solutions will be carefully crafted. I believe that this solution can be more carefully crafted and can bring in more public support. In terms of the committees, I support the citizens committee to look at the location and also financing and looking at a comprehensive public facility and needs assessment. Senior centers, police, fire, parks, the whole ball of acts. I also, I, I think too that part of the problem here is, is, you know, we're amongst ourselves sometimes, you know, we're accused of pandering to a minority. I treat all concerns with seriousness, and that's because our, our legal system has really created, in our democratic system, a tyranny of the minority. So we really do have to listen to the minority and the majority. What I believe about being on city council, though, is that we need to better understand the silent majority as in numbers. You know, we have twenty people, there's eighty thousand more people out there. And I know with our general plan update, one of the things that I really like about that is we did an attitude survey. So we have a baseline of, you know, what it is that we think are the attitudes of our community, and we can begin to shape a plan around that. So in addition to the committees, I would like to see the city do some type of polling and to really reach out in that regard and understand where our community is on these issues. So I, I would amend the substitute motion to include that, some type of a attitude survey and public information, and not simply to look and create a paper trail of, we looked here, we looked there, we, we did this, we did that, but really to, again, get into the, the attitudes and the, of our citizens. In terms of the threshold question, do we need a city hall? I believe that's been established, and I think that we need to continue to deliver services and improvements to our citizens. The core functions of our municipality are coordinated and administered through our city hall. The city hall is very important to fulfill the needs and the requirements of the community, and it needs to function like a public, public building. So those would be my comments.
Well, I'm counting right. We've got four votes. Now you're going to hear from me. I vote against this project and Torrey Rose contract, the Griffin contract, second time. Well, we have spent three quarters of a million dollars getting to where we are, including assessment report and twenty percent schematics and a, and a fixed cost. My prediction is if this goes to a committee, this city hall will never get built. And I don't think anything would be approved on this site, because the, the problem is, if you moved off this site and you spent twenty-five million for another site, first off, if you found another site in this robust market, you would be increasing the costs of this project by fifty percent there without knowing what would be redesigned on the site. It would have to be subject to a vote. You'd never do that. I don't think this project would take a fifty percent load by going to another site with the uncertainty of approving a rezone and a reuse of this site. So I think we can look at, we can have this committee look at different sites, but I think you're going to find in this community where there's already an initiative for COP and debt, that you better be building it for as cheap as you can. And cheap as you can means you build it right here. Forget the tsunami, forget the liquefaction, you're going to build it right here because you can't afford to put any more load on this project that's tenuous at best. So Greenlight doesn't have to be voted on. You just can't take the risk because you can't span the time to move it to somewhere else and then have a Greenlight vote. If you do that, this project is going to be, the cost of construction is going to be thirty percent higher before you ever talk about land prices. So that, in that parting case, you can look at other sites, but I think that's a pretty simple solution. You're going to come back to this site. The committee can look at it. I think I, I do say that as far as our costs, we should look at what a fifteen-year plan is, a capital improvement plan of all things. We don't have that in place, and I think we need to have that in place. And if it's a hundred million, let, let the residents know. Fire stations, libraries, whatever it takes, that needs to be done. I don't think you can look at this project as a fifty-five million dollar expenditure without knowing what you're going to be doing in the entire fifteen-year span. So if that's a hundred million, so be it. That's the cost of doing business. And if you want this town to be up to speed, first class, what other cities are doing around us, and you look at that on an income and expense source basis for the next fifteen years, where money's going to come, and where money's going to be spent, and what our current cost of employees are, and what that has been going in the past, and what it will be in the future, then you need to do that. So that takes care of that component. Then you need to verify the costs. Okay, we've got a cost to build this, this type of construction with these sort of schematics. You verify the costs. And that's pretty simple, too. There's people in this area that do the same sorts of things, the poor concrete, that buy steel, that weld things, that put on roofs, and that can be verified. But I think this committee structure is limited. I think this committee structure should be focused on why you would not do this project. You're talking, and I'm the one who voted against it. But if you give this committee a clean sheet of paper and start looking at different sites and talk about rezoning and Greenlight votes, and talking about redesigning the building and what it looks like in this cost environment, where costs are going up ten, fifteen percent a year or more, this project will never be built, and that may be the solution that the residents want. You're not going to get anything, because you can't, because you won't face the debt, like most of us do, that won't move out of our house because they couldn't afford the bigger mortgage. Or on the other hand, you just don't want to make that sort of decision. And that's fine, too. And you'll have what you have. But I think the committees, my focus is the committee will have a short life. It'll come back and, and analyze in a very direct way why we would not proceed, and at the same time, the residents can have input. And if they don't want to do it, then we won't do it. And we can have the city hall for another twenty years, and we can patch it and keep it here. And if that's what the residents want, that's what they're going to get, because I don't think the residents in this community have the stomach for a seventy-five or a hundred million dollar city hall. I don't think you're going to get it. And I don't, and I think from what I'm hearing tonight, you know, you're not going to get there any way, shape, form, if you don't do it soon and spend the money that's before us. And if, and if the input from the residents during that time is that they don't want to do it, we won't do it. We have what we have, and that's the default setting. So I agree with the committee. I think there are gaps in what we, what we've done, but I also agree that this committee, I would not give them six months, I'd give them three months. What's before them are not complicated issues. The issues are verify the site, why you need to use this site. There are not very many four-acre sites in this town that are ready for sale right now, because that's what you're talking about or will be in the foreseeable future. Verify the cost, not too hard. You're doing tilt-up concrete, you're buying windows, you're buying carpet, that can all be done. And then verify where your money's going to be spent, how it's going to come in for the next fifteen years, how you're going to spend it. Verify that, see whether you can afford it. And then the residents, all this, this time, those two initiatives are getting votes, and we're going to get a pretty good focus from the community what their stomach is. So I don't think we need to go and spend a lot more money if the residents of this town say no. They don't want it, they don't want to spend the money, they don't want to, they, they don't want to proceed with this project, then we'll stop dead in our tracks. And that's fine, the residents will have spoken. We can't, we only respond to you. You know, you think that we're not listening, but we are listening. And so that's why I would have a very short life on the, on the committee, especially in this cost environment, especially when we have these ideas that are fresh before us with the design team. And that's what, that would be my goal, would be to have very short life. And listen, I've been on both sides of this issue, mostly no. And I would say that if the residents are saying no, I'd be on each of those committees, not because I need more work, but at the finance side, I know, and the other side, I can, we can verify. But this committee will have, it will have momentum. This is not a clean sheet of paper. We're not going to go back to square one, because if we have, then we spent seven hundred and fifty grand for nothing. The project is, is sculptured before us, the facts will be before us, and we need to verify them or to reject them. Okay, that's, that's my, more than my two cents. I went on too long, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Webb?
Are you suggesting that the committee complete its actions? You said three months, but if we look at a, an appointment, the first meeting in January, let's say they don't get organized and going until the first of February, so that maybe the committee would be, report back by the first of May, that really gives them three working months?
Well, I mean, I just posed the question. Do you think in three months they can, they can address the simple, not simple, but the precise focus topics that I have? That's the real question. If you think they need a year, or they need six months, and I, you know, then that should be discussed. You know, that was just my opinion.
Well, is there really concurrence on the topics that they'll be discussing? I, I know I don't want to limit to the focus that you are, the narrow focus that you've suggested, which is, you know, why not do it? To me, that's a magnet for negativity, and that you're just putting nails in the coffin of the project.
No, I'm just telling, I want somebody to tell me why we would not do it, why this site is not the logical site economically and otherwise, why those costs that Griffin has proposed are not valid costs, whether it's Fulmer, Oltman, Severson, McCarthy, whoever you want to verify them, why those numbers aren't good, and why, and why our costs, whatever they are, if it's a hundred million dollar cost projection for, for the next fifteen years, why the city couldn't absorb, you know, COPs, whatever you might want to call them, of six million dollars a year to pay for all this stuff. That's why I'm saying why we cannot do it, rather than why, justifying why we can't. Just the reverse.
Mr. Mayor, my concern is that's the focus of my way, or prove me wrong, versus a more listening to the community and what they view as their way.
Well, if you do it their way, they won't have a city hall, because that fifty-five million will be sixty-two million or sixty-five million in a year. And if we look at different sites, in this, in this high-cost environment, we're going to add a twenty-five million dollar load, and it'll be an eighty million dollar project, and the naysayers will win. This is not a short, this is not going to be, if you make it open-ended, I think that the more likely result is that this project will never proceed at all.
Right. This project is going to die the death of a thousand lashes, is, is really what it's amounting to.
Yes.
And it's, and it's time to make a decision. It really is. We, you know, Leslie, I appreciate what you're saying about more community input, building consensus. It's, six months from now, there's not going to be any more community input than we've had tonight. It'll be the same input, we'll have the same consensus. I honestly believe that. I mean, it's a huge vote, it's been in the newspapers. We've got twenty people here out of eighty thousand residents. I mean, it, it is appalling. I, I'm shocked that there's not more. But I thought this room would be full tonight. But, you know, it's just people are not interested, and the issues are very complicated. It's not a matter of, you know, do we need a new city hall or not? There's, you know, there's, you've sat here for hours, we've all sat here for hours and gone to committee meetings and studied this and read reports. I mean, how does, how is the general citizen going to absorb all that? I mean, if we put all this information at the library tomorrow, how many people do you think would go down there and check it out? Ten? Are, you know, I mean, really, honestly, seriously, think about what we're, what we're, what we're saying. You know, I, I respect the community, and we've given the community many opportunities to come down here and speak their mind and let us know what they think. But the community voted us in to make these decisions, to research these decisions, to spend the time, to talk to the experts, to, to pore over the material, to analyze it, to make a judgment. And we need to exercise our, what we feel is the proper judgment in this instance. I mean, it's, the decisions will, the, the, the views and the opinions will not be any different six months from now, I guarantee it. I, I, if I didn't, if I didn't honestly think that, I'd, I'd vote for it. I'd vote for the committees. But I don't think it's going to change anything, and it will effectively delay the project, which is what I think the, the, the small core of opponents want, is to further delay the project and to just drag it out as long as possible. You know, I've been a real estate broker for almost twenty years now, and the one thing that I've learned is, the longer the escrow is open, the more likely the deal is to fall apart. And, and this is a classic example of that. The longer we agonize over this, the longer we drag it out, the more likely the whole thing is just going to fall apart, and we'll, you know, revisit this again in ten or fifteen years, just like we did ten or fifteen years ago and ten or fifteen years before that. And, you know, we've always done little patches here at city hall, and, you know, it's time to just step up and, and do the right thing.
Who's next? Ridgeway? You don't have to be.
Well, I, I'm just troubled by Councilmember Dagel's comments when she says, you know, the, the legal system sets up a tyranny of the minority, and yet she wants to succumb to the minority. I don't get it. You know, this, in this, I, I don't think this is about leadership, it's, it's about good, sound fiscal judgment, and that's what we're trying to exercise here. It's also about public safety. We're trying to exercise that. So it's not, to me, it's not that difficult of a decision. Yes, I'm in real estate, I make decisions every day, I make design decisions, I make location decisions. I made my arguments earlier, and I actually think the silent majority is out there, I think most of them probably don't care. I think Mr. Rosansky hit it on the head. It is complex, they're not gonna go to the library and read it. They are trusting us with this decision, and quite candidly, it's a safety for our employees, it's a need for efficiency here, they're on top of each other, you saw the TV, you saw the airing of TV tours through here where literally people are on top of each other. And again, seismically and disability-wise, it's a deficient building, it's an inefficient building. I'm just taking the position of, as you actually indirectly or directly stated, it's a fiscal responsibility and it's a safety issue, and we're there. And so. I do support clearly, if you're, if they're gonna go to a committee, do it quick. There are no four-acre sites in this city, period.
I guess what I would like to know from the, from the makers of the motion, what would be the breadth of topics for that committee? I mean, because clearly there's a difference of opinion here already on what the charge of the committee would be, and what, and, in other words, there's specific topics and when they would be called upon to report them. I mean, I, I give you my sense, but I don't, I'm one guy up here, I'd like to hear from the proponents.
Mr. Mayor, as I see it, the charge of the committee is to review other sites within the community that might possibly be available, and to look at the ability for those sites to be developed with a City Hall in an economic manner that would approach what can be built here at this site. I agree it needs to be focused, and I definitely don't feel that the committee should be looking at how we can reorganize the staff at City Hall and make changes and that type of thing. That's not part of it. It's really to cover our bases and make sure that we have looked at all options related to site location. As far as the 15-year plan is concerned, that is a fairly, I don't wanna say easy, it's a definable thing, is to look at what we think the infrastructure, major infrastructure needs, and let's say by major, those building reconstructions that might cost more than $4 or $5 million. But not look at every project, capital improvement project we're gonna have over the next 15 years, and those are, are gonna be normal. But like, for instance, if we need a new police facility, or if we have to rebuild all the fire stations, or, those are the types of things. So that that would be, and, the other part of that is, how would we look at the projections that we have for increased revenues and our ability to be able to fund it within the general fund process, and what we might need to use in the way of a bond financing, either certificates of participation or actually bonds. I think that it's important for us to look if we were to go to general obligation bonds, what might be added to people's tax bills, if we were to use, use that process as opposed to the certificate of participation.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Ed.
Yes, Councilman Dagle, go ahead.
I support the scope of the committee as outlined by Mayor Protem Webb.
Mr. Mayor, just a suggestion, and that is if the City Council votes for the committees, I would suggest the Building Committee meet again and come back with a recommendation that's something you have on paper at the next City Council meeting to work, that is agreed to by the whole City Council, and the term of the meetings of the committee is also agreed to to work. That is not something that just pinned out tonight, but that everybody agrees and that we can advertise the committees with that definition of what their task would be.
Mr. Mayor? I also would suggest, it seems like that we need to have sooner rather than later, and I would suggest a report back, or the report of the committee be finished by the first of May, instead of, that gives them about three to three and a half months to do the work.
Mr. Sallis, you wanna weigh in on the charge of the committee topics?
Well, I, I too think that there has to be definite boundaries as far as what the committee does. Typically, anytime you start setting up committees, they're gonna wanna go and start wandering outside what the, what the charge of their, of their tasks is, and so I think it's important that we have a very clear and concise mission statement stated as part of whatever we come up with in terms of what we want these two committees to do. And I think Councilman Webb adequately described what we had talked about in the Building Committee in terms of the parameters that we wanted these two committees to, to have. So, you know, I think when, and I think the City Manager's suggestion that the Building Committee take it a step further and come back at the next meeting with what those parameters are is the proper way to do it. And I'd also say that I think one of the advantages of doing what we're doing is that in virtually every instance that I'm aware of, the building committees that have been set up by cities to do building, to build city halls, have not been set up the way that we have. Ours has been a very, I'll call it an insular committee, that it's been council people and the city staff, and there really hasn't been citizen members or professional members of the community as part of the building committee, and that, that in my experience is a pretty unusual situation, so I think that this gives us an opportunity to maybe fill that gap in a little bit.
Okay, and one of the things I didn't see on the Building Committee's recommendation would be any assessment of the verification of costs. That is not part of the charge? I mean, I'm not saying it should be, that wasn't part of the text. If you're okay with it, that's fine.
I think that as far as a verification of cost and the work that has been done, we have 20 percent plans, we have somebody that has come together and put together, I think, a really, probably pretty complete estimate. If we go to, and I think that's what Councilman Ridgeway had suggested, a completion of architectural plans and then bidding the project out, we can put together estimates and verify Mr. Toriaro's costs, but they're not gonna be valid for a set of plans that is not completed yet. And I'm not sure, I think that what we have now is the best figures that we're going to be able to get. If we get a verification of costs, it might go up a couple million dollars, it might go down a couple million dollars, but I don't think that it's gonna be substantially different. I think that we have a very good feel for what the magnitude of the cost of a project on this site is going to be today.
Okay, all right. Any comment there, Mr. Sallis? Are you okay? I don't, you know, that's fine.
No, I'm fine.
I don't wanna cut you off. That's great. Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Are you satisfied with the boundaries, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it's kind of going in my direction, it's pretty limited. But I just wanna make sure, Councilman Dagle, I mean, that's because it's very, it's even more focused than what I said.
Well, I believe that you're certainly correct, that we do not need to open up Pandora's box and start all over. That isn't the idea. The idea is to finish our studies where we are missing data, and I think we can do that, and we should do that. And I believe that it's set up that way and limited in scope, so it seems to me like it's a very good plan to go forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's point a border, what are we voting on, City Clerk?
Last motion was an amendment to the substitute motion to add the attitude study, or attitude survey.
The substitute motion was recommendations one, two, three, and four.
Did the...
There was not a motion on the amended.
Did the amendment didn't receive a second?
Second, I'm sorry. There was no second on the amendment.
All right, just for my curious mind, what are we voting on, then?
Then you would be voting on the substitute motion, which would be action items one, two, three, and four.
Is that what you just talked about, Mr. Webb? Okay, okay, we're talking about Mr. Webb's summary he just made, that would, that's what we're gonna be voting on. So you're clear on that, City Clerk?
The committee's recommendations plus what, Mr. Webb?
Right, is that, are you staff clear on this?
We would complete the committee's work by May 1st, is what the change that I'd made.
Good, and we try to reconstitute this committee next meeting, to get the definition down, we're all in agreement about it?
That's right, and then make the appointments at the first meeting in January.
Okay.
John, just one question, and that is, is number one in there? My question is, is, has the Building Committee seen number one? Have we seen the full contract submittals from the...
We saw the presentation tonight.
And that's what it is.
And that's, that's it?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, let's vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky and Ridgeway voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Item number 16, naming of park located at Mesa Drive and Birch Street.
All right, who's here to speak on this item on the park?
Councilmember Dagle?
Nope, there's, there's one right there.
I move that we continue this.
A second.
Come on, Jan, they, didn't Barbara beat you up enough about this?
I'm just gonna, my name is Jan Bennett, and I would agree with Barbara Benes's and the community's name for the park.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna sic her on you every time. She's like a junkyard dog.
Why don't we just agree on Upper Bayview Park?
Let it rain.
Okay, let's, okay. Okay, let's...
By the way, I think there's gonna be some green grass on that park.
Okay, wait a minute.
I think it should be a weed park, myself.
City Clerk? What's our action item on 16?
Well, it was the naming of the park, but a request has been made, including a request from Barbara, that we continue this item until the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a...
Okay, is that fine? Okay, the motion, maybe we have a second?
I seconded already. Or no, I made the motion, she seconded.
That's right.
Leslie seconded. We're tag teaming this one.
Thank you.
Ed needs to run.
Who hasn't voted?
Ed hasn't. Todd's gone. Motion carries.
That's good. Okay, what's next?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, is there any motion reconsideration here tonight? Okay, none, none. We'll adjourn, our next meeting is 7 o'clock, a week from tonight, November 29th. Is that right, City Manager? That's right, 7 o'clock on the 29th. Thank you.